Darcy, could you please have a roll call for us?
Commissioner Lopes.
Here.
Commissioner Middaugh.
Here.
Commissioner Peterson.
Present.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Pack is absent. Commissioner Moss has not signed in yet. And Commissioner Wilson has not signed in yet.
Thank you. I'd like to call a call order. Welcome to the Clackamas County Planning Commission, February 26, 2024. This is a workshop today to discuss ZDO 288 and 285 that will be coming up for a hearing in the month of April. So today we have staff that's going to deliver some of the facts to us so we can answer, ask some questions and see if we can straighten this thing out and get it to what our public would hope we would be presenting. So I'm going to ask, are we going to start with 288 first?
We are. Let's, before we do that, Chair, just quickly, we do have, for a study session, kind of a big audience tonight, there's four people in the audience. And so for their benefit, there's no public hearings tonight, as the Chair mentioned. These are just study sessions, so we don't specifically have a time for testimony tonight, but we will at the public hearings. We do have a public comment period at the beginning of every Planning Commission meetings to allow for people to just make general comment on anything that might be of interest to the Planning Commission. We do ask that comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And so if there is anybody in the audience who wanted to make any kind of general comments to the Planning Commission tonight, please use the raise hand feature. And let's see, if I can, I am, I think, the host here. So it looks like Ed Wagner does want to make some comments.
Okay, Ed.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for the opportunity. My name's Ed Wagner, and I'm one of the two opposition coordinators for a portion of the Tonquin project that 288 is specifically relevant to. This is a stretch of Stafford Road from I-205 to Wilsonville. That PGE is planning on converting our 40-foot PG distribution lines to 110-foot tall, high-voltage lines. And our group is a legal group, it's called Safe Stafford Road. We have 50 homeowners that are part of the legal group. I happen to be one of the two executives on it. And we also have, of the 50 people, we have 20 that are committed to contesting condemnation, if it gets to that. Our point with your conversations regarding 288 is that, Jennifer, we watched the November video of your meeting, and I certainly appreciate the fact of with upwards of 2,000 land use permit requirements per year that you probably are under the gun there. But, and we certainly probably appreciate the fact there are a number of situations where, you know, a CUP is not required. In our situation, we believe that not only is CUP ultimately required, we would really like to think that if the board and your organization truly looked at what was planned for Stafford Road, that you would stop it in its tracks, and I'll go through it very quickly. I know I have limited time. The three key elements of this conversion from these small poles to these ginormous poles that are planned by PGE to go from I-205 to Wilsonville. First and foremost, it will be very destructive, semi-rural scenic road. There's some easement requests by PGE. Hundreds, if not thousands, of mature trees will be taken down. These huge monstrous poles, if any of you've ever driven out Nyberg Road to Sherwood, those are the kind of poles in the industrial area that are going to be going in. High voltage transmission lines don't belong in a neighborhood. They belong either in open rural fields or along the freeway, but not in neighborhoods. Many of you probably don't know Stafford Road is a minimum five-acre, five-acre ownership properties. And every property on this road has open fields, and we are highly suspect of fire danger. And this is probably the most critical element that I really expect the county to carefully, carefully assess, is that we already are in a higher fire danger zone as it is. We have one small little fire station, station number 57, that has one fire truck. We've had a number of fires on the properties. And keep in mind, folks, that if a line goes down and that line happens to be the same line that delivers electricity to your property, you have no way to put your own fire out because everybody's on wells out here. So we have no fire protection, and by adding 110-foot-tall, 115-kV high-voltage lines just exacerbates the situation. We don't do this just out of, just discuss, common discussion. We've had different consultants talk to us about this. And, you know, we had the ice storm recently. When ice storms hit 110-foot lines and they're, they get in, and the wind comes up, they get into a wobble, and they can break, and they could come down. Stafford Road has already become a highway bypass for I-205 and I-5. It's become a freeway. People crash into poles. We have all kinds of dangerous situations regarding that. And we would just really, really think that in your planning, the group that does the planning here, that you'll seriously consider that not every situation is the same, and that you'll give serious consideration when putting these kind of considerations, you know, under your thought processes. Because we are adamant in our community that we are seriously objectionable to this, you know, to this expansion of these lines. You know, I would suggest that every one of you drive out to Sherwood on Nyberg Road, look at those poles, go drive on our sweet little rural scenic Stafford Road. That's probably one of the last scenic roads in between two metropolitan areas, if you will. And it will be destroyed, and people's value, people's value, go ahead.
Wrap it up, okay?
Thank you. That's it. That's it for me. Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much for coming, because this is a very serious subject with my neighborhood too, which is the Mount Hood corridor. And we have, just a brief comment to go with this. I had PGE sitting next to me, oh, a couple of weeks ago, Valentine's Day, as a matter of fact, at a Firewise Committee meeting that we had. And at the end of the meeting, they, we were doing a round circle, asking them questions. So I turned to PGE and asked with the comment to start with that this is a constructive comment, not criticism, but over 100 years ago, the Mount Hood area was electrified with power lines that came up Highway 26, bare wires through trees. These wires are still existing 100 years later, bare, above, through trees. 100 years from now, what will our communities look like? Will they still have these power lines going through them, above ground, uninsulated, through trees? Are we going to have to keep putting up with this? So I hear you. When are we going to make the change? Oregon is not, or this area is not exclusive to having this problem. My wife was from the state of Florida. She said they don't have power lines above ground. State of Texas, my neighbors who were just here, do not have power lines above ground and two feet down at solid rock. They, they recognize an issue. So you're on something. Please keep pushing. Anyone else have a comment?
Thank you, Ed, for your efforts on our behalf. I appreciate it. I live on Gage Road.
So I'm trying to figure out how to move Mr. Wagner back to the audience, which of course, Darcy is the pro at. And I don't have a choice. It says I can remove him, and then he will no longer be able to be in the webinar. Or I can promote him to panelist. It does not seem, let's see, hang on. Maybe I've got it here. There we go. I think I succeeded finally. Mr. Chair, I don't have any, I have several other hands up. I'm assuming potentially all related to this issue. So I just, I guess, want to be clear for the audience. We can, we can, because it is public comment, we will go ahead and take additional comments. People really need to try to keep them to three minutes. And this is not a hearing about PGE's project. I understand that that is a concern. We will, staff will be certainly talking about that during our presentation. But this really is not the opportunity to testify on the issue. And PGE's project itself, if it is a conditional use permit, will not come before the Planning Commission. It will come before the Hearings Officer, and there will be, you know, testimony taken at that time. So I guess I just kind of want the audience to understand it's not that the PGE project isn't going to be at the forefront when we're considering these code amendments, but we're not really making a decision about that tonight. So. Yep.
Okay. I'm happy to time testimony.
Okay.
Go ahead and do that. Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and admit Adam Hall now.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I will keep this really brief. So I moved up here to Oregon 10 years ago from Southern California. I figured out the Navy. And to Ed's point regarding the fire danger, I lived through, in Southern California, I've lived through multiple wildfires, the Cedar Fire and others that ripped through communities. And what I can tell you is that any time a fire is going uphill, it will spread faster than people can react. And so if you drive down Stafford Road, what you will notice is that almost all the homes are uphill. So along the road where they're proposing putting these lines, if there, a line goes down and it starts a fire, it is highly likely that people are not even going to be able to evacuate the properties. Because the fire goes up, heat rises. So it's not, I talked to the PGE fire specialists, and I'm sorry, but I, I've lived through seeing my hometown of Alcoa, California, burning on fire with ash raining, you know, coming down like snow. And I've also seen how my parents' house that was built in 1930, which is on the bottom of a hill, has survived multiple of these because it was downhill from the fires. So my point being that I would stress in backing up Ed's point is that drive down Stafford Road and consider where the people live versus where these lines are. And that's something that isn't going to be apparent if you're just looking at a two-dimensional map. I hope I kept it under three minutes.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comment, Adam.
Okay, now I have Anthony Barber.
Anthony, welcome to Clackamas County Planning Commission. Go ahead.
Does not look like my camera is on, but I believe you can hear me. Yes?
Camera won't come on.
Excellent. You probably don't want to look at me anyways. That's fine.
I do.
I am also a resident of Stafford Road. I respect your, your perspective that this isn't about the specific PGE process that's been discussed. I will say, however, as a professional licensed engineer and as someone for the last six to seven years has, has worked on the recovery of wildfire-prone areas, and specifically Paradise and other places in Northern California, all up and down the west, western Oregon, and most recently helping the residents of Lahaina in Maui recover from wildfires that came from specific incidences of less-than-optimal planning processes and permitting processes, as well as actions and activities by such entities as energy companies. It is greatly concerning to me that there is a consideration that the processes by which these companies and projects come about might be the, the subject of, of trying to grease the skids, if you will, when that might not in all cases be appropriate. I don't want to belabor the points. I echo everything that Ed had shared with you. Thank you, Ed, for that. And I just want to provide my, my opinion as a resident, not just of Stafford Road, but as a professional who lives in Clackamas County and has experienced a number of major disasters due to poor planning that now might not be the right time to, to relax our standards toward a less safe community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, and now I have Kelly.
Hello.
Hi.
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 Thank you. Thank you for having us. I have a question. Is this the committee, you are, this is the committee that will determine whether these changes are made to the current standards? Is that correct?
We will review what planning is presenting to us. We will make statements to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners have the final. So this is just a workshop today to score our hearing, which will happen in April.
Okay, got it. Okay, well, I, I also just echo what everyone has said. I don't have much more to add. I live on Stafford Road. We had a shop fire this July, and our entire shop burned down. We live right on Stafford Road, and it literally took 24 hours for them to put the fire out because they had to shut Stafford Road down and shuttle water. Because we don't, you know, we have wells, and so we couldn't, anyway, it's really, really a dangerous spot to have fire risk. So I'm just reiterating that point, and I really appreciate you all listening to us on this. And I hope that these standards are not relaxed because I fear that climate change is just making the conditions worse. So that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, I don't have any other hands raised. So we could move forward with the staff report on the utilities proposal, if you would like.
Yes, I think we should, unless there's any comments from Commissioners at this point. Okay. Okay, Joy, take it.
Okay. I think the agenda actually said it was Joy and Karen, but it's actually Joy and Jennifer.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, you're stuck with me instead of Karen tonight. She had another meeting, so she, she couldn't be in two places at once. I'm going to go ahead and give just a bit of an introduction. I say a bit, but this is me, so I'm sure it'll be three times longer than what I intend. But, you know, that's how it goes. I do, you know, want to be, I guess, just to those people in the audience, to be clear that I am certainly not suggesting that the Stafford Road project doesn't have any relationship to these amendments. It absolutely does. It's just not the only thing. In fact, it's not even really the main thing from a code standpoint. I completely understand it's the main thing from the perspective of the people living in Stafford, and we want to be sensitive to that. But the, the reason there's urgency to amend our code really has almost nothing to do with the Stafford project, and instead has to do with the other 2,000 utility permits a year that we get and what we need to do to kind of make the code more functional, which does not necessarily mean changing the standards for all utility facilities. But it does mean taking a look at how our code works. And so that's what we're, we're here tonight to begin to talk to you about. And I guess I want to start by saying, you know, you're aware that we have a long-range planning work program that we look at every couple of years. This project isn't on it. This is one of those things where we didn't realize how big a problem we had until we realized how big a problem we had. And so we needed to, to kind of move forward with something more, more rapidly. And that's the reason that you're going to be seeing this when we, we hadn't really anticipated it. It is being done, though, as a fairly streamlined process. We're not, you know, convening a bunch of groups and going out to all the CPOs and spending a year trying to figure out what to do. This really is kind of a stripped-down version, you know, we're going to have hearings. We're certainly going to let people know what we're doing, but it's basically, you know, the Joy and Jennifer show in terms of figuring out what this is all going to actually, you know, what, what's going to be written up as and what we present to you. So why this, why now? I mean, obviously, you can tell from the folks who spoke tonight that there is a very specific issue that's going on in the community. We've been aware, staff has been aware that there are issues with the utility provisions in our code for a long time. But our awareness was really more about the, the fact that our definition of public utilities is really not sufficient to cover truly what types of utilities we have, and that creates some administrative inefficiencies in the code. So that was kind of a, kind of a main issue that we were aware of, that we kind of just needed to update that. Maybe there was just sort of some lack of consistency across zones in terms of what's allowed or how things are referred to. So it was more technical considerations than realizing that we maybe had this, this kind of administrative burden we didn't realize we had in our code. And so what actually happened is that an attorney, the attorney for the, the group that Mr. Wagner was talking about, reached out to the county with questions about this particular project. And he ended up speaking with me, and the question was, you know, doesn't this need land use approval? And I said, well, I really don't know. I'm not familiar with the project. I don't know what's going on. Let's look into this. He also was in contact with County Council. And so in the end, County Council did kind of a deep dive on the zoning code and said, yes, in fact, even if a utility facility is inside a road right-of-way, it requires a conditional use permit. And so this kind of was, you know, I guess, a bit of a, I mean, maybe we should have known, but I would say for 60 years of zoning in Clackamas County, I don't think that we were really aware that that was the case. And probably honestly, just staff over all these decades didn't give it a lot of thought because utility providers weren't asking us utility permits that the county issues for work in the right-of-way don't come to the Planning Department for review. They just never have. And so I think these things, you know, pipes are going in the ground, and we're just not even really realizing that, that this might potentially be an issue. It's also interesting because the county is actually legally required to allow utilities in the right-of-way. But that's not quite the same thing as saying it doesn't need land use approval. And I think that was kind of a nuance there that maybe, you know, we weren't really aware of as, you know, as an organization. So that's kind of the background. It is the Stafford project that precipitated us to really look at the code. When we did that, we realized, well, wait a minute, we get, at least in, I think it was 2022 that I looked at the stats for, I haven't looked at 2023 yet, nearly 2,000 utility permits and county rights-of-way per year. The Planning Department is literally unable to, to review to that. We can't. We just cannot. We do not have anywhere remotely the manpower to be dealing with that, or the person power to be dealing with that. Now, a lot of those permits, to be clear, are relatively minor. It, they're not, you know, they might be just kind of a modification, or it's underground. It's, you know, we're swapping out 140-foot pole for a 45-foot pole, or a wood pole for a metal pole. They aren't necessarily major permits. It can be stuff related to fiber optics. I mean, anything, a sewer line. So they're not, certainly not all of the scale we're talking about in Stafford. I think those are kind of, kind of the highlights. You know, I imagine I may get questions about, well, what do other jurisdictions do? And the answer is, I don't entirely know. We don't have the time to review 35 other counties. I can tell you that we've been, I'm relatively certain, I need to read the details a little bit more, but relatively certain that Washington County exempts public utilities in rights-of-way. I have heard that Marion County does the same, but have not done, really looked at their code yet. So I think, you know, there, there certainly are other counties that likely are doing things in rights-of-way without land use review. But that certainly doesn't mean that they're all doing that, or that they're all doing it for all utility facilities. Um, with that, I guess I just want to reiterate in terms of, because especially for people in the audience, you know, kind of how is this process going to work? So Joy is going to go through this PowerPoint and talk about some more details. We've got some discussion questions for you, for you to respond to. The next thing will be that we develop a draft of code amendments. That's going to be happening over about the next 10 days. Right now, it's mostly in my head. I've done a lot of thinking about it, but we don't have it on paper yet. It's, the amendments themselves are relatively simple as far as actually writing them. It doesn't mean it's simple what they will actually do, but, but the actual drafting is not likely to be particularly complex. The notice, the public notice will go out on Monday, March 4, I believe, is the date. So that's the 35-day public notice that will go to all of the community planning organizations. It will go to some people on our interested parties list, which does include the Safe Stafford Road group. Their attorney is already on the list, so in case they have concerns about that, they'll be, they'll be noticed. As well as, you know, utilities, of course, and, and some other interested parties, the state Department of Land Conservation Development, et cetera. The amendments will be posted on our website by the end of the day on the 4th. So if the public does want to see them, that's where they'll be able to find it. And from there, then your hearing is scheduled from Monday, April 8, at 6:30. It's the only item that will be on the agenda that night. So we will be focusing entirely on these code amendments. Planning Commission, you could schedule a continuance if you feel like you need one. We would have some available time later in April or in May that you could do that if you need to. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation only to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners hearing is currently scheduled for Wednesday, June 12, at 10 a.m. And the board, yeah, ultimately, they, they are the ones that make the decision. So I guess with just kind of my last comment about the Stafford project is that I think it's going to be difficult to keep these things separate because I suspect that most of the testimony we get, of course, understandably, is going to be about this rather large proposed project. And so I encourage the Planning Commission to try to think about this issue more globally. And we don't have to treat all utilities, facilities the same way. So it may be that some choices are made, that certain things go in category A, and they're just allowed. And certain things are in category B, and they require a conditional use permit. And we could talk about all of that. But it is important, I think, to not, to not have that be the only thing we think about when we're looking at our code. And with that, I will let Joy get started.
Thank you for that thorough introduction, Jennifer. It's helpful to have the context. And I hope that this quick slide presentation will help further our understanding of the issue. And I wanted to make note that this code amendment project was considered by the board back in November. And they looked at the issue of both the definition of a utility facility as well as the underground nature of many utility facility lines that go through neighborhoods and areas of the county. And they talked about utility facilities inside and outside of you, of road right-of-ways. And they guided staff to adopt a more comprehensive definition of utility facility, or consider amendments to the definition of utility facility to be more comprehensive, and to limit the requirement for underground utilities to utility facilities that have a need for other utility services rather than utility facilities that provide services to others. And to allow the following outright, utility facilities inside road right-of-way and utility lines outside of the road right-of-way. These are things to consider during this adoption process through code amendment language and public hearing and testimony. Currently, our definition Currently, our definition in the zoning development ordinance, section 202 for a public utility is a utility regulated by the Public Utility Commission under Oregon Revised Statute 757 or any other utility that provides electrical energy directly to consumers within the state of Oregon, including but not limited to municipalities, cooperatives, and people's utility districts. You know, notice that if it's not, uh, regulated by O R S 757, our definition is specifically for electrical energy. When you look at Oregon Revised Statute 757, it is, um, a little bit more broad than just electrical energy. It, it includes, um, owners, operators, managers and, and, and entities that control both the equipment and the plant generation and the production and transmission, delivery or furnishing of heat, light, water and power. So under our current definition, heat, light, water, power and electrical energy is considered a public utility in our zoning code. However, that leaves out sewer, stormwater, conveyance systems, uh, broadband infrastructure and fiber optics. And as we are looking at the future of our code, if we are not amending the definition of utility for another 30 years, how do we wanna look at, uh, utilities? Uh, we have an understanding that for our current life, um, sewer is provided in areas of the county. And they tend to go from a, uh, where it's produced to a treatment facility through linear pipes. Um, stormwater tends to be collected and conveyed through linear pipes to a, a management in, uh, uh, device or a river. And then broadband infrastructure, um, like the fiber optic cables that provide internet to people's homes go through linear facilities to, uh, serve our internet needs. In our, uh, zoning development ordinance, section 1,006, all development is required to have their service lines underground unless prohibited by the utility provider. That's all development. Um, and so it does not necessarily apply to the larger utility facilities such as electrical distribution lines. Um, because it would be really difficult to put the high voltage power lines underground, if not impossible. Um, and this item needs to be clarified in the code to determine if there is a point at which, uh, the electrical lines or the utility facilities need to go underground or if it needs to stay, all development, uh, has to install these underground. One point, as we go further into the discussion tonight, is that in many of our zoning districts, utility carrier cabinets are allowed outright as an accessory use. We often think of utility carrier cabinets in neighborhoods provide, providing the little cabinet at a development, um, for P G E or, uh, telephone cable boxes. But these utility carrier cabinets can also serve utilities out in the rural areas, um, or gas pipelines or different infrastructure. And right now, utility carrier cabinets, if they are meeting certain, um, size limits are exempt from requiring a conditional use permit. However, the definition doesn't necessarily uh, lend clarity to staff or utility providers because it's really, it, it seems based on electricity and telecommunication. Um, and so there's not clarity of whether these other similar apparatus would include the monitoring equipment required for a natural gas pipeline, um, to make sure that the pressure of the gas and the pipeline is intact or to alert people that service may be required. And so these, these small enclosures are important, but it's important that the utility providers, uh, understand what this is and if they can use this mechanism in our code to allow these, uh, off-site service utility equipment, um, enclosures. As Jennifer mentioned, um, we have questions for you tonight about utilities in the road right of way. Um, right now, our zoning districts often go across the road or to the middle of the line. And so many of our residential zoning districts, commercial zoning districts and industrial zones require conditional use permits for all utility facilities in the road right of way. As Jennifer mentioned, that's over, that's close to 2,000 a year. Um, utilities outside road of right of ways ha- have similar requirements. And the reason that this is important is because, uh, in state law, in the exclusive farm use zone, the timber zone and the ag forest zones, which are arguably the most restrictive zones in our zoning development ordinance, state law allows, um, the utility facilities that are in the road right of ways to be, uh, modified with, without land use approval. So in the E F U timber and ag forest zones, uh, if you were to change this, uh, small electrical pole along the rural road in this zone, you could do it outright. You wouldn't need land use approval. However, that's not the case for our rural residential zones where our zoning code does not currently, uh, exempt the above ground or underground utilities in the road right of way. There are, um, utilities that, uh, go through our rural residential zones that will fit in the ri- road right of way. And then there are others that cannot. And many of the high voltage power lines that cross our rural, um, areas of the county, uh, uh, have to meet federal law and, uh, a lot of them are non-conforming uses. And so they go through their own process. So tonight, we're, we're not necessarily talking about these giant high voltage power lines because what we want clarity on from you are these smaller, um, these smaller utility facilities. Uh, that would be exempt in the rural areas from getting a conditional use permit because of state law. But in the urban areas, they would require a conditional use permit. And a conditional use permit looks at the use to identify if the property is, uh, adequate for the proposed use and if it will significantly impact the character of the neighborhood. And so there's a question of, are these, uh, utilities in the right of way in the, in the, uh, the rural, uh, residential zones, the industrial zones, the commercial zones, the urban residential zones? Do they impact the community more than the rural, uh, utility lines in the right of way? And if they, um, don't, why do we need a conditional use permit for them? That's my question. But, um, as you find in your packet, we have questions for you. One, should all utility facilities in road rights of way be allowed outright? That's the broadest, um, thing to consider. Should some facilities in rights away remain a conditional use? Um, is there a certain height? Is there a certain width? Is there a certain voltage? Um, is there a certain, remember, while power lines are visually easy to see, we also have broadband, we have sewer, we have natural gas. And, um, so pipes, is there a certain diameter pipe? Is there a certain, uh, length of service line? Um, you know, five miles or something else? Should some of these remain conditional uses based on their size? And should some utility facilities outside the right of way also be allowed outright? Underground facilities that are linear in nature. We're not talking about giant sub, um, I don't know the language, sorry, uh, the, the transmission substations. That's the word I was looking for. Um, we're talking about the linear facilities, those natural gas pipelines or the broadband. So those are the questions we have for us. And I wanna see if Jennifer has anything that I missed that she wants us to have background on before the discussion starts. Um, but I will mute myself.
Joy knows me well. I'm scribbling notes. It's like, oh, I wanted to say this and I wanted to say that. Um, Joy said everything she was supposed to say. It's just all the stuff I thought of while she was talking. I was like, oh, wait, we forgot about that. Um, so just, I guess, a few kind of closing points, which is, um, first of all, regarding the Board of County Commissioners, um, that first, you know, that first slide, um, they have officially initiated amendments to the zoning code. So that action took place at their policy session in November. And they have already set the parameters for what we're gonna notify for. So we're really not asking for you to change that tonight, but we still want your thoughts now and we're trying to prep you for the hearing. And the board was very clear. I was very clear in speaking to them a- at the policy session. They are very clear in their discussion that they're starting broad. And it doesn't mean that they're going to end up where they started. Um, but we're starting, we're starting broad. And, um, and then, you know, based upon testimony, et cetera, may decide that more things should continue to require conditional uses than the initial proposal, um, will be. So I want to clarify that. Um, and there's been no discussion, I mean, certainly you can weigh in if you feel differently about this, but there was, the board did not ask us to initiate code amendments to make nonlinear facilities outside of rights of way outright permitted. So like substations, like Joy mentioned, or water reservoirs or, uh, sewer pump stations or water filtration plants. Those things would still require a conditional use that we're not intending to initiate an amendment related to that. So, and those don't typically go in rights of way. So we're basically talking about linear facilities above ground and below ground, inside and outside rights of way. And then these little, like she mentioned, these little cabinets, these little ancillary things that could be associated with a line. Um, I did want to note Stafford actually is split zoned. I believe that the folks that are in this particular group are all R R F F five zoned properties, but the road itself has E F U zoning in some places. So this situation where it's gonna be allowed outright in, you know, one place and then not some, is true on Stafford, which is what, um, Joy was mentioning, that it makes it a little harder to administer the code when you're kinda going back and forth. Um, I think in terms of, um, oh, and then as Joy mentioned, federal preemption does play into certain things. There are certain natural gas pipelines, those B P A lines, like I don't think the county really has any authority on things like that. So if we're preempted federally, nothing you do or nothing we say in our zoning code is gonna change that. We just will be preempted if it comes up. That's not the case with this P G, particular P G E facility or many other utility facilities that the county permits and writes away all the time. Um, and then I guess in terms of your conditional use discussion, to just keep in mind, um, e- my thought process, process is sort of, okay, if we're going to require a conditional use permit, what's the reason for that? What criteria would, would we be looking at for something like an underground sewer line running, you know, down the road? Like what criteria would the planning commission be wanting the hearings officer to look at in that context? And our conditional use criteria, you know, I mean, it could be something like, it could be something like safety. Um, and the other big one tends to be aesthetics when it's above ground, right? And so that's that kind of that Stafford project. It's like how it's gonna look and this, this fire safety question. And I guess, you know, the question is, I don't know enough yet about how these things are permitted by the P U C or what standards P G E is held to, but the safety standards, it's like, is that something that the hearings officer should be applying? Or is there this idea that there are other, um, agencies out there that kind of do some of this oversight? Um, so I think those are the kinds of the things that I would encourage you to think about as we move through this discussion. Um, and we need these things. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna argue that we don't need utility lines crossing the county. We do. So the question is, if it's not appropriate in location A, what would cause it to be appropriate in location B? And I think talking through those issues could be really helpful and kind of, um, kind of clarifying what our pol- you know, what your policy concerns are. Um, so with that, I'm gonna stop talking. And Murph, it's your show now.
It's my show. Any commissioners here have anything to say? Okay, uh, let's see, it's between Tammy, go ahead.
Okay, um, let me, I just, um, I read this and now I have very different understanding than what I read. So, so that being said, I need to do a couple clarifying things. Number one, just to clarify, conditional use permits were required this whole time, but were not being secured. Is that a fact?
Okay, fair. I mean,
Okay.
I, I'm trying to be really, I guess, uh, trying to be careful in terms of what I say because this, this opinion from county council is just an opinion. It hasn't been tested. There is this kind of body of law out there that says the county has to allow these things in the, in the right of ways. So does that be, you know, so there might be just a little bit of a question, but I think we feel like the best read of the zoning code is that yes, it, they should have been required and generally they have not been.
That leads then to my next part is, so we really don't know what that would look like. And I think you started to touch on that. So what have we been doing? Well, we haven't. So to do a conditional use on a utility, we don't really honestly know how that would look. And I'm sure Mr. Cox, the hearings officer, doesn't want to deal with utilities. So that's fascinating to me. Okay, so that, that then leads me to, um, we built a little subdivision. And in our subdivision, we had, um, travel right away, road right away, and, and we had utility right of ways. Um, may I assume with all of our thousands of roads in Clackamas County that we have right of ways on? We don't however, have utility right of ways there. So that's a question.
Okay, so a couple of things. I want to back up a little bit to what you said. First of all, we have experienced doing conditional uses for the things, the, the nonlinear facilities. So it's not that the county's never reviewed any utilities we have for other, you know, reservoirs and pump stations and substations and stuff like that.
Yeah, big stuff.
Uh, big stuff, right.
Okay.
We have at least contemplated the idea of doing land use review for linear facilities outside rights of way. It, it came up in the context of the Portland Water Bureau filtration plant, um, out in Bull Run area. And it turned out they decided to use their existing pipelines. And so the issue didn't ever, we had to review it for an access road. And of course, the plant itself is in Walton County, but we didn't end up having to look at the pipelines. So it's like, we've kind of known that there might be a thing outside rights of way, but I don't think we really realized about the rights of way question.
Okay. Um, and so, so to move one step further on the right of way, um, when is it that you wouldn't, uh, when you would consider something outside of a right of way? Uh, it's a shortcut, it's quicker, it's easier, it's cheaper, or literally there isn't a road and they've got to get across. Or when does that happen? Cause I don't really get that either.
Um, I mean, I think, and it, I think it will be good if we get some testimony from utilities and I think we will. Um, I mean, I think, and it, I think it will be good if we get some testimony from utilities, and I think we will. Cause like, we're gonna talk to a few people saying, come, come testify, because we want, technically, we wanna understand. You know, we do wanna understand how this is supposed to work. Um, I think it it, you're, it is kind of what you said, when there's not an efficient way to do it in a right of way is part of the question. I mean, obviously, like those BPA lines wouldn't fit in a right of way, so it, they have easements, you know, for those. Um, so sometimes it's a space issue, but I think sometimes it's the most direct route. So you will see, like, subdivisions where, like you were mentioning, um, there can be an easement. First of all, there's a road right of way, and sometimes there is a public utility easement adjacent to the right of way, which is a whole nother permutation on what we're talking about, like the technical detail here. It may not be as straightforward as saying, allow them in rights of way and without a conditional use permit and nowhere else. It may be more like, allow them in rights of way and public utility easements adjacent to rights of way, or something like that. Because it's very common for there to be a five foot or, you know, whatever, an easement that's provided when a road is created. But that's not the case on all of our rural roads by any stretch, but like in your situation where there's a subdivision, yes, that's very common for there to be um, a facility easement across the front of, especially in urban areas.
Okay.
Um, but you can have these easements that run through developments, not in rights of way. And it's because it's the most efficient way to get wherever it needs to get. And so it's not uncommon for there to be like a sewer easement or a storm drainage easement. Those are really common, crossing lots within a subdivision to get to wherever they need to get that water.
Yep, makes sense. And one final, and I'll shut up. I didn't quite understand Joy's question about if we're out here in timber and EFU or whatever zone, and we've got these big towers and lines, and that's just approved, why would that be okay, but not okay in an urban? And so I don't really quite get that question, that, because urban is vastly different than huge forests and open areas. So can you maybe drill that down a tiny bit, Joy, cause I didn't quite answer, uh, get that question?
So I was not talking about the giant BPA transmission lines.
Hmm.
So my, the the lines I was talking about were the tel-, the forty foot, maybe sixty foot telephone poles that are in the right of way. And it um, it's, in some of our rural areas, we have water providers
Mm-hmm.
that can put their water pipes along the road right of way um, without a conditional use permit. So we have these linear facilities in the rural area um, that can go in the right of way without a conditional use permit. If it's zoned EFU, timber, or ag forest.
Yeah.
Based on our current understanding of our code, um, from what county council has said, that's not true in our rural residential zones, our urban residential zones, our commercial zones, or our industrial zones, all of which require conditional use permits for uh utili-, public utility facilities.
Okay. Big, I, now I get it totally.
Kind of, it's kind of a question about, does it make sense? You know, it's this, hey, we have these vast areas of the county where you can already do this without a permit.
Right.
Does that make sense? And we should be, should we be doing this everywhere? Or is it like, no, this really is problematic, and we we are worried about it, and we shouldn't be, you know, that's, that's kind of the discussion.
Right, okay. I just misunderstood. Thank you, Joy. Well done. Keep going.
Hey, I guess I'm next. Um, I, um, Jennifer, if you wouldn't mind, I I didn't quite understand uh what you meant when you said that the commissioners have already set the governance. What does that mean? Uh, so in other words, is that, uh, I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that.
Um, not the governance, but they've, they've set the um, the, they've told us what code amendment to initiate. So in other words, you know, the way that the ZDO works, especially for people, I mean, just for the newer folks who haven't been on the planning commission, as long as some of you. Um, a code amendment can be initiated in one of three ways. The board can initiate it, the planning commission can initiate it, or the planning director can initiate it. So we can't, like, a member of the public can't just apply to have us change our code. Has to happen formally. So the board actually made a motion and voted to initiate a specific code amendment. So that's what we are gonna propose, but that isn't necessarily where it's gonna end up. So that's kind of, yeah.
All right. Um. Right now, my head's spinning trying to sort through this one, because there are, there are so many nuances to it. Uh, I'm not sure how you're gonna be able to come up with something that that kind of works for all or generally works for all situations. So uh, this one's gonna take a little thought to kind of sort through what makes the most sense here. Uh, it's not an easy one by any means. Some of them, on the other hand, it's pretty routine stuff. Uh, so why should they go through that dance? But, you know, when do you determine when it's routine and when it's not? It's kind of the dilemma here, so. Uh, this is not gonna be an easy one, I don't think.
Louise?
Yeah, um, thank you. I have a couple of questions. Um, the first one is, when we talk about the definition of a utility facility, I've read the different ones listed on the slide that Joy put up. I didn't see traditional phone lines, landline, in other words, like, somebody said a telephone pole, which of course is what they used to be called. I know broadband is included, but isn't regular telephone included in that?
It should be, yes, yes. It, our current definition's inadequate, and um, Joy did a great job of pulling some out, out some examples of the stuff that's not covered. But there's more that's not covered, I think, is your point. And so, yes, the idea would be that we would propose a definition that really captures everything you would normally think of as a utility, and it should include landline telephone, yeah.
Okay, um, I have more questions. Um, my whole um attitude going toward this is looking at safety because of climate change and wildfires. Are we able, as we go through this, to put um zoning language around if um an overhead, say, electric lines are being put in? And that they be stipulated to be put in a certain distance from a house, as well as from a forest? In other words, basically, you're least likely to burn badly, which is a pasture land. I'm not trying to, you know, go against the pasture people, but if you're talking about massive damage, it's either to people's homes and structures, or it's the ma-, to wildfires and forests. So the safest to me would be your, your flat land with relatively nothing on it. Can that kind of a stipulation be integrated into that? At all?
Um, yes, I think, um. I get concerned about being overly specific if we don't have the expertise. That's one thing that's got, that the conditional use permit is an advan-, you know, is advantageous, is that it's fairly broad, and so a use comes up, and different experts and neighbors and different people can kind of weigh in, and you know, you can, so there's some benefit to that. But if you wanted to um, to maybe draw a distinction between what could be done outright permitted versus what would re- require a conditional use permit? And if at the end of all of this, it turns out that overhead power lines are what we're most concerned about, and I, I mean, that's clearly what we've heard the talk about tonight, and of course, the fires that we've, we've experienced. Um, and if that turns out to be the one, you could have a standard that would say something like, you know, power lines, if they meet these standards, are outright permitted, and power, and other power lines need a conditional use. And so if you wanted to have something like, it's distrib-, uh, you know, uh, service lines are fine, which service lines kind of already are, because they're accessory to your house. We don't want people getting conditional use permits to run electrical service from the street to their dwelling. But um, but like transmission and distribution lines, if you wanted to say, as long as the towers aren't over this height, or as long as they're this many feet from here, as long as they're put on slopes of no more than X percent, or as long as there's a corridor cleared, you know, X feet wide, you could propose something like that. Um, and I think, you know, whatever the commission, whatever you wanted to end up recommending to the board um, could be used in in distinguishing um which ones need conditional uses and which ones don't.
And then just one more uh thought on that. Can we also require that at least with new development and new lines being put in, that electrical lines must be underground versus overhead? I doubt we could force all existing overhead lines to suddenly go underground. I'd like it, but you can't do that, I don't think. So could that be integrated into this?
So um, that's one of the questions that's kind of in front of you, and and I'll be honest, I don't really know legally. Does the county have the authority? I mean, that's an interesting, hasn't come up yet, really, about whether the county could require uh transmission and distribution lines to be underground. We kind of have a question about whether our current code could be interpreted that way, but I don't know if we have the regulatory authority, or if like the state could say, well, no, you can't make them do that. I don't, I don't know. Um, I do have some concerns, I think, um. We currently have a requirement, I think it's clear, that if you are doing a new service line to a new business or a new house or whatever, it has to be underground, and it's actually been that way for decades. Um, unless like PGE tells them, you can't put it underground, which I don't think happens very often, right? So that's, and I think that a lot of that, it may have been some service reliability and safety, and probably also frankly, aesthetics. The overhead lines and, you know, wanting to have a cleaner look to buildings and things like that. I think it was probably a combination of all of those things. Um, but the distribution and transmission lines, it gets, you know, I'm not a technical expert, but I know it could really drive the cost, which affects all of us. It doesn't mean it's a bad policy choice, but it does mean rate payers, you know, we have to think about what does that mean? And then I don't know what the technology actually would allow, as far as everything being underground. Um, but that's something that you can certainly propose, and I'm guessing we'll get some testimony from, uh, you know, PGE and others about what that means.
Yeah, I mean, somebody already mentioned it, that in other states of the United States, lines are all underground. And I grew up back east, sixty years ago, when I was a child, every, all the electricity was a hundred percent underground. And I'm like, come out to Oregon, I'm thinking, hmm, these folks are a long ways behind the times, we need to catch up. And that, of course, will reduce the risk from wildfire. The West is really at risk for wildfire, for drought and for forests. And so I think we need to move in the underground direction and catch up to progress in other locations. I'm just wondering how we incorporate that in.
Yep, no, that's a good point.
Great, thank you.
Michael?
Oh, yeah, uh, I'm in agreement with Louise. I believe that we need to have more of our utilities underground. Uh, you know, recent storms have proven that, uh, you know, we get so many outages now from uh storms with these overhead lines. Um, I think that the utilities, if they say it's gonna cost more to put it underground, just take a look at what it just cost for um this recent storm. And they're gonna be uh, uh, putting that onto our rate uh for electricity, you know, to pay for it. And if it was underground, we probably wouldn't be having that problem, or not as bad. Well, the other thing that I wanted to find out, I think I have a good understanding of what conditional use is. But I would like to get a definition of that, and who determines whether a facility needs to have a conditional use or not?
Um, sure. So a conditional use, I don't know, I actually am not really sure if our code truly defines conditional use. Um, off the top of my head, I'm not sure that there is one, but it basically means the type of use where someone, and really, it's the board, whichever board adopts whichever code amendment over the last sixty years, decides that a use has some characteristics that means it might not be appropriate in every location. And so instead of saying, like, we do, you know, we have single-family zoning, and say, you can have a house, and nobody really gets to tell you, you can't have a house, as long as you meet the setbacks and the height and get a building permit and all that. A conditional use is more like, eh, you know, maybe we really shouldn't put a school in that particular location. Or maybe we really shouldn't put a power substation in that location. Uh, so it could be an inappropriate location, or it could be that the use requires some kind of mitigation. So it'd be like, eh, you need to screen it, you need to, you know, so there could be things um that would sort of control impacts. So it's like, you think the use has impacts on something that should be controlled. It's determined by the code, and ultimately, that's adopted by the board. And then um, if they have to apply for a conditional use permit, that goes to the land use hearings officer. And the hearings officer actually makes the decision on whether the the conditional use is approved or not.
So a conditional use then means you could only use it for this type of operation, or what?
Um, well, no, you could have a piece of property, um, you know, that's zoned, let's say, RFFV5, which is a rural residential zone, um farm forest zone, so you can have a house on it, you can farm it, you could have a couple horses, you could, you know, harvest timber. Um, you could have a shop, a barn, you know, whatever, um, that would just be allowed. But you might also instead choose to try to get a conditional, conditional use permit, because you've decided you wanna have an event hosting business, or you wanna run some kind of equestrian facility for more horses than we would normally allow, or a school, or a utility, or a, there's a long list. Um, and so it's not that you can only use the property for that, but but if you decide you want to use it for that, then you have to get a conditional use that goes to a hearing, and if it's approved, then you can do that use. Or you could change your mind and do something else, or stop doing it, or or whatnot.
So so how does this apply to utilities and the facilities we're talking about here? I I can understand about uh the personal property and having conditional use for certain things. But utilities seem to be very specific. Uh, you got an electrical line that you're gonna put in, you got a telephone line you're gonna put in. So wh- what does conditional use uh relate to those particular items?
That's a hard question, because one of the aspects of a conditional use permit is there are conditions that allow the use to be compatible with the neighborhood. So what is a condition that staff would recommend, or the hearings officer would approve, that would make a natural gas gas pipeline appropriate for the neighborhood? What is a condition of approval that a staff would recommend, or the hearings officer would approve or require if it's a broadband uh fiber optic cable for internet? I could see conditions of approval for power lines. Maybe it's uh ensuring that it's mown um once or twice a year to reduce fire hazard. But what are conditions of approval that you would apply on other linear facilities inside the right of way or outside of the right of way? And that's, that's why staff are coming to you to say, is this a logical requirement in our code when we don't know what conditions of approval would make it more compatible with the neighborhood?
So let's say, uh, in my house, uh, I wanna get a gas line, but I don't have the facilities there. And I go to the gas company, and I say, I wanna put gas in for my furnace, or my kitchen, or whatever. And there's no gas line there. Does that have to get approved for, you know, the community there that I'm in? Uh, they don't have any other gas facilities there, but I want it. Uh, just so, so the gas facility would have to go get a conditional use just to run a line to my house?
Not for your service line. The service line, like, if there's a gas line in the street, and you're just gonna run a service line from the main line in the street to your house, that's just an accessory use to your house. We would, we don't, you don't need a conditional use permit for that.
No, I I'm saying, I'm saying there's no main line there.
Yep, it needs a conditional use permit. Now, never in the history of Clackamas County that I know of have we required a conditional use permit for a gas line in the street, but a literal reading of our code says it's needed, which is why we're here. Does that seem appropriate, or maybe not?
I I I I think you're right there. I I I do. I got gas, and I got fiber optics coming into my place, and uh, you know, there was no problem with it, because I guess it was already there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, I I have a question or two. Uh, based on on that, uh, somebody hasn't asked this yet. Uh, we're talking about a conditional use permit for the right of way uh of uh power lines. Does that mean each property has to have that conditional use permit that those power lines are crossing? Or does one guarantee conditional use all the way to its destination? There is one question.
Murph, you asked the best.
Murph, you ask the best questions. Um, okay, go ahead. Interesting, interesting that you raised this. Um, so yeah, there's a couple of things. Um. So the, uh, the answer we think is they can get one conditional use permit. So we don't typically require, I mean, historically, if, if there's a tract of land, you know, somebody owns three or four or five contiguous lots and they want to do one use on those lots, we don't make them get five conditional use permits. They apply for one. Now, if they want to do one in Beaver Creek and do something else that, you know, uh, welches, then that's two different permits. But if it's all contiguous, we would treat it as one. So I think you can do one conditional use permit for a linear facility. What's really interesting though, is that our code, um, for, because the board made some changes maybe five years ago or so, maybe not quite that long ago, um, to really expand the notification distance for public hearing items. It, we're talking when it's something linear like that about potentially notifying thousands of people, which is problematic. It's problematic from a cost standpoint for the county because our fees are not structured to recoup the cost for something like that. So I'm stressing a little about that. Um, so that is one thing we're going to have to look at. If the conditional use permit stays in effect is like, how many people are we going to notify? You know, because a half a mile on either side of a seven mile long power line is a lot of people. So, yeah.
There is one question. Another one is, what if you're crossing an organic farm and they need to put in a pole? That's creosote. Organic status, I mean, that's an issue.
I can't answer that.
Another thought or, or comment, I, I mentioned I'm part of the Firewise Mount Hood Corridor Partnership Firewise, uh, group. And, uh, that's, I attend both meetings, one for HOA CPO, the other for the agencies. Our last meeting, I sat next to, um, the PG rep that was there. I don't have his name here. Uh, but we had Commissioner Scholl was there. We had, uh, the Mount Hood Supervisor was there, Meta Loft Garden. We had Greg Lanner, who's now Ranger of Zig Zag Ranger District. We had DLCD rep, we had other Forest Service, I mean, and we had, uh, Jenny, I can't remember her name. She's a, um, Fire Marshal. Um, she's been to a few of our meetings. We had quite the turnout, plus Clackamas Fire. Um, so as we were doing roundtable, I raised my hand and said, I had a question for PGE. Because we keep having power outages over and over and over. Uh, they're getting worse. I asked, a hundred years ago or somebody ran power lines up the Mount Hood Corridor and they used bare lines, no insulation on these lines. And they ran these lines through timber, right through the trees. Over a hundred years later, we still have bare lines running up the corridor through trees. And they're causing, there could cause potential fires. They get knocked to the ground when we have today's storm, windstorms, ice storms, they shut it off or public safety power shut off. Some of us have durable medical equipment and people that depend upon that that don't have a way to energize the, this equipment. Or we have freezers that we're losing because we just foraged all summer and we filled them. And now it's been seven days, the power's been off, we're out of fuel. This ice storm, you couldn't leave the neighborhood. There was no communication to go on top of that. Plus we lose communication. So having power lines above ground is kind of in the past. Other states that have issues with power lines getting knocked over, very similar to the state of Florida, state of Texas, they bury their lines. And I don't care what size they are. So I asked PGE, why can't we bury our lines? I said, I did a little background on this. I know there's new materials out there for dry insulation over high power tension lines. You can, you can put a sheathing on them. Or if they're very high power, they put them underground with a wet bath around them and then a sheathing over there. And that's how they can contain these. Are they expensive? You bet. But they don't go out. There's no reason these don't fall to the ground and you have to wait seven hours when you have a planning commission to chair, whether or not you're going to show up. This is something that, I, what's our community is going to look like a hundred years from now? And when do we start to look, when do we start to be concerned about that? If we're going to allow urban growth in our rural areas, it's time to start taking a serious look at our public utilities, is my estimates. And, uh, and my thoughts on this, and that's what I'm driving for is can we come up with a modern solution to this? Uh, this, you're, you know, we only have a few weeks to think about this and come up with solutions. But I'm open to assist in any way, shape or form, and I know there's committees that are. Uh, and then I also have one other question and that is, uh, do I have to be ex parte because I'm doing so much digging on this? During a hearing, so.
No, this, this is a legislative item, so there is no ex parte. You're welcome to discuss it with community members or anybody else you want. Uh, if it's quasi judicial, like if PGE's actual application was going to come to you, then yeah, that would be problematic. But, but it's not. It would go to the hearings officer if they apply for a conditional use permit.
I'm just asking. I did just go to the training course too.
It's, it, you're fine.
I've got a question that regard. I mean, you mentioned that, like, PGE can say that this particular line is barred from being underground for whatever reason that they determine, right? Is that reviewable by anyone? I mean, if PGE says we can't, is that the final word?
Um, so I'd say that's an open question in our code. There's really two open questions. One is whether those type of line, our code, what it says is something like development that has a need for utilities shall install them underground. And I'm kind of, I, I'm inclined to think that if PGE came in and said, we're building a distribution line for the metropolitan area, that the distribution line itself is not really a development that has a need for utilities. So I, I cut, my general take is that it probably doesn't have to be underground under our current code. Um, once we determine that it does need to be underground, like a service line clearly would need to be underground, then it's reviewable only in the context of the actual application. So PGE could write us a letter for, let's say, I'm going to install a line to my new house. And they would say, you know, Jennifer can't have this line underground. It's prohibited. You know, the planner could maybe push back, ask PGE questions if the neighbor disagreed. They could appeal it. They could submit something that says, you know, Jennifer's brother works for PGE and made this up. You know, I mean, there's, there's ways that you can, you can.
I just wonder how much of it's cost driven by PGE as opposed to like logistically driven? In other words, is it really a problem for PGE or is it just more expensive to do it that way? And I suspect with some of the Stafford issues that may be exactly that. Also, one other question I had was, since I've got the floor, um. And I don't know if it was in state code or in county code, but there was, somebody said earlier in the presentation about that utilities, if they have a significant neighborhood impact, then they could be, perhaps you could go back over that again. If there's a significant neighborhood impact, then we can review that, but otherwise, like, anyway, who determines whether there's significant neighborhood impact? I guess that's the question.
In conditional use applications, um, one of the criteria looks at impact, significant impact to the neighborhood. And, uh, so staff looks at it. Then, uh, people who provide testimony looks at it and then the hearings officer looks at it. Um, that's for conditional use applications. Um, if I said those words while describing something else, I apologize for, if I caused confusion. But, um, under our current code, that is one of the criteria that is looked at for utility facilities that have conditional use permits.
Very good. So therefore we could say that like all utilities in the future that were underground within a right of way, blah, 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 do not require a conditional use permit. But something like the Stafford Road Project based on certain criteria would, because of that impact. In other words, we could use the impact as a general tool to force things into conditional use permits that otherwise might not apply. Is that correct?
Correct, but you would be establishing, you wouldn't have a standard that just says impact, it needs a conditional use, right? You would be deciding now to, oh, in April, to recommend to the planning, to the board, hey, the planning commission thinks that these utility facilities have impacts, potential impacts that are significant enough that they should have a conditional use permit. And you, you're going to recommend to them which ones those are. So it might be above ground outside of a right of way. It might be above ground everywhere. It might be only above ground if it's over a certain voltage. I mean, you, you guys get to decide whatever that recommendation is based on what you think the impacts might be.
So we need to define significant neighborhood impact is basically, yeah.
Yeah, and you're, at least in your mind. And so you can tell us, Jennifer, this is what I think needs a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Kevin?
Couple of points. One, I want to hear more at the hearing from all sides where we're at before we dive into this. Point one, for the most part, we get to choose where we want to live in the county. If we want to live in the rural area, in the city or outside of it. So with that, we all make choices. So sometimes we have to live with the consequences of said choices out in those areas with storms and whatnot. So that factor is a choice factor. The other factor that I think might be simple to answer our question about asking PG to put these all underground is we ask the board to ask our government relations team to talk to our state legislators to have a Senator or representative draft a bill to require PGE to put all new said lines underground. And that way, so that's really outside of kind of our scope. I see what we're trying to do. We're trying to right ways. This is really a state and federal issue when it comes to utilities or outside of our planning commission telling utilities what they can and can't do. Now, it does lead us, do we want to put some constraints on it based on what Jennifer and Joy are saying between the rural area and that? I under, I understand the, the outright issues of the rural timber agricultural right next to the road. We see that across all the highways that they run the lines through it. And yes, PG will probably come and say, yes, it's, it's more cost effective to keep them above ground and more expensive to do underground. I mean, we can, we can, we can see the economic points they're making there and that. So I, I'm just looking forward to this public hearing and seeing what all sides have to say and then craft something rather than just us hearing the presentation tonight from just one piece of it. I apologize, I missed the first public comments that we had there, but that's, that's where I'm looking for that is seeing where we, where we end up.
Thank you, Kevin. Michael?
You, all right. I, I, I want to continue with what I was saying before about underground. I drive down Lynnwood, um, Avenue in, in, uh, Milwaukee, uh, that particular area. I do that about two or three times a week. That road has been under construction for probably the last year, maybe a year and a half. They've been putting stuff underground there, but not the overhead power lines. I would think that that would be a situation where the power company should be a part of that program that put those lines underground. Because the, the, uh, folks putting in the roadway there are digging up the ground. They're putting the sewer lines underground. They're doing everything underground. Yet the power lines are there and I see signs that said, watch out, overhead power lines. As I go down that road for the last year and a half, it's crazy to me. I come from Louisiana. Our roads there, our facilities, a lot of them, most of them were underground. We have hurricanes come through there and they take out the power lines. The power company has put them underground for the most part because they don't have to put them back up. It's crazy that we don't do that here. Thank you.
Tom?
Well, where I appreciate everyone's concerns about, uh, whether, whether power lines should be underground or overhead. That's really not what we're being asked to do here. And so I think we can maybe, we're kind of belaboring a point that's really up, above and beyond what the intent of the scope of this project is. So, and, uh, just as a tidbit, being a former electrical engineer, uh, I know a little bit about power lines underground and whatnot. And I was, I had to, had to, just for the sake of argument, Murph, I couldn't believe that all of Texas is underground. So I looked it up. And you, it may be majority of the low voltage, medium voltage, stuff for the cities is all underground. But thirty, only thirty-three percent of the high voltage transmission lines in Texas are underground. So there's a reason for that. And so I think that's a bit beyond the scope of this project. I think we're kind of getting off track. Not that I don't disagree with what you're saying and that ultimately that's where we should be headed. I don't think that's really in the purview of what we're being asked to do, uh, for this initiative. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Tom, for your experience too. Thank you. Anyone else?
So that being said, should we kind of go back to the presentation and the three questions that Joy reviewed? And see if we're, I don't know, anywhere close? I, I accept, it's up to the commission. I guess I'll note, you know, it's eight o'clock and Martha's waiting in the wings to talk to you about something else that I think there's a high level of interest in. Um, you don't have to come by, we're not expecting a recommendation tonight. We don't need a recommendation tonight because the board's already set the scope. Mostly I wanted your wheels turning, um, and to have you prepped for this hearing. So if you feel like you want more discussion in order to get to that spot, we'll stay here. Um, you know, as long as it, well, I'm not going to say as long as it takes, but we've gone, we've gone late before and that's okay. But I, but we, Joy and I don't need you to come up with a recommendation, I guess is what I'm saying, until the eighth, then we do.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Tammy. Thank you, Jennifer. I, is it okay, everybody, if we move on with Martha? Okay, excellent. Martha, take it away.
Look, she's there. I thought like there was just going to be nothing. I didn't really think that.
No, I really am here. Um, and I don't know if we want to do a short break because I have a feeling we're going to be here a little while longer once I start talking. Maybe, uh, it's, it's up to the chair. It was just a thought though.
Five minute break?
Five minutes, yeah.
Um, come back at, uh, eight oh, eight oh four. Okay.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, um, I have a shortish presentation also. Jennifer, do you want to introduce this or do you want me just to like jump right in? Okay, um, I'm going to share my screen. I have a short presentation. We're basically talking about two different but related topics. And I think if you'll humor me, I'm just going to go through the presentation, but I'm happy to go back and like pull up, uh, different slides. Cause I have some sort of like discussion consideration prompts for you. Because these are similar issues. So let's just get started. No, there we go. Okay. ZDO two eighty-five. So ZDO two eighty-five is a package of code amendments that will be coming to you, um, later on this spring. It is under the sort of category in our work program of minor and time sensitive amendments. Um, but to also channel Jennifer a little bit, this package is really more about time sensitive amendments. Um, I've been calling it the legislative amendment package. Um, it contains items that primarily items that respond to, um, legislative changes, other changes in state law and rules, some of which are optional and some of which are mandatory. So today, we're going to talk about the two optional. some of which are optional and some of which are mandatory. So today, we're going to talk about the two optional changes that were made. And by optional, I mean that the county has a choice whether or not to implement these. It is not a mandatory thing that we have to implement, like House Bill two thousand and one and the housing amendments were. And so specifically, we're talking about rural ADUs and RVs and second dwellings. So I'm going to start with the ADU portion, just, you know, with this sort of discussion of what is an ADU. We talk about them a lot. Lots of people talk about ADUs. We get lots of phone calls about ADUs. There often is a bit of a confusion about what actually they are. They are a separate dwelling, a complete dwelling. It has a kitchen, it has bedrooms, bathrooms. They can have a laundry. It is a second, usually smaller dwelling that's located on the same lot as your house. The primary dwelling, a detached, single family home, a manufactured home. The ADU itself can be attached to the house. It can be detached. It could be, there's other options. It could be an internal conversion of part of your house. You could have a detached garage and an ADU above it. But the important thing to keep in mind really is that it is a second house on a property. It is a complete dwelling. So why are we talking about this right now? Well, we do, the county does allow ADUs in some areas. State law for many years has required us to allow ADUs in certain areas within urban growth boundaries. And so we do allow ADUs within urban growth boundaries, but state law specifically prohibited additional dwellings, second dwellings, ADUs outside of urban growth boundaries until twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. There were two Senate bills that expanded this allowance of ADUs to include certain areas outside of urban growth boundaries. I mentioned this is optional. The county does not have to adopt these standards. We did go talk to the board back in the fall and asked them if they wanted us to proceed with code amendments for consideration to, to allow ADUs subject to the standards under state law. And they did say yes, go forth. You know, with the understanding that they, they wanted to hear from the public and from the planning commission and understand if, if they really did indeed want to adopt these or, or adopt the allowance for ADUs maybe with different standards than the state requires. There are certain minimum standards in the state law that we have to apply. But state law does allow the county to apply additional standards. So what we are talking about outside the urban growth boundary are only rural residential zones. This does not, this allowance would not affect farm and forest zones in the county, the EFU, ag forest and timber zones. It's really only applicable in rural residential zones, which are listed up there, including the RA two, RF five, FF ten, RR, which is largely up on the mountain, and FU ten, which we I won't, is not really supposed to be outside of the urban growth boundary, but it is in a few very small locations. The state law specifically also prohibits this use inside of urban reserves. So what we are looking at is rural residential lands that are not in an urban reserve. I sent a map, which I pasted here. It's probably hard to see. I sent a map just generally identifying the areas where this would apply. It's the sort of bright yellow areas outside of the gray urban growth boundaries, outside of the blue urban reserves. And those, those are the lands that are zoned rural residential. There is some question that Jennifer and I are trying to get to the bottom, the bottom of Lith County Council about whether or not we can allow these in rural reserves. That's why the rural reserve is identified on their sort of light. We're not sure at this point and we're going to get some clarity from county council on that. It may be that we can't allow them in rural reserves and then this map would have even fewer yellow spots on it. So those are rural residential lands. That's where this would apply. So very generally, well, hopefully, quickly, the minimum standards under state law include a minimum lot size of two acres, a maximum, what they call usable floor area, although they don't define it, of nine hundred square feet, a maximum distance between the primary dwelling and the ADU of a hundred feet. So in other words, it, it can't be clear on the other side of, you know, your five acre property. It has to be, excuse me, close to the primary dwelling. You can only get one ADU and there can only be one other dwelling located on the property. So in other words, you cannot have the primary dwelling plus a temporary, like a hardship dwelling for somebody or some other type of accessory dwelling on there. You're only allowed one of each. There's language in this, in the statute that says that it can't be, essentially can't be a nuisance property. It can't be subject to a nuisance complaint or any enforcement. And there's reference to specific other statutes. That's something that we are working on trying to figure out what exactly that means and how we would identify that. It is not simply a code enforcement issue. It's a specific reference to a a different sort of, but perhaps related nuisance. There must be adequate, you know, water and sewage disposal and other utilities provided. The ADU specifically cannot be used as a short term rental. And then there are some wildfire mitigation standards that are written into state law. I do not pretend at this point to be the expert on the wildfire mitigation standards because they are admittedly a little confusing. There's sort of three basic areas. One is this fire hardening of structures. It's this R three two seven code in the building codes. So rural ADUs are directly tied to this effort that the state is doing related to wildfire hazard mapping. What the rules say is until the state adopts the wildfire hazard map, all ADUs, all rural ADUs have to be built to this, this building code, the fire hardening standards. Once the fire wildfire hazard map is adopted, only the high hazard areas, only only if it is identified on that map as a high hazard area, do you need to build using this specific building code for fire hardening. There is another category that is going to be included in the wildfire hazard mapping, the wildland urban interface. That provision has defensible, defensible space surrounding structure regulations. So if, once the state wildfire hazard maps are adopted, the property is within this WUI, as it, as it, I think is how people are saying it. There will be some requirements to provide defensible space around the ADU. Currently, until that's adopted, there are no requirements in state law. And we're trying to sort of weave these things together to make sense of it. We don't right now, if this, with this code package, have to require any defensible space around the ADU, but we may decide to just to be set or we're going to maybe write some if, if thens in, into our code. And then there's some provisions for adequate access for emergency services, including firefighting equipment and safe evacuation. Other counties have addressed that by requiring specific clearances and widths for access, for the actual driveway access onto the property, to the ADU. And that's something that we're looking at as well. So those are the minimum standards under state law. Those are the locations where we can consider allowing these, this new use. There's lots of considerations. Jennifer and I have been talking about a lot of these. And, and again, it's similar to the last conversation. We don't necessarily need a recommendation from you at this point, but these are things to think about, especially if you feel very strongly about them. We'd like to know. And generally, you know, are there certain locations that may be more or less appropriate for rural ADUs and why? Like either certain, certain rural residential zones, certain geographic locations, maybe you don't think it's a good idea everywhere in Clackamas County. And also if they're allowed, are there additional restrictions or standards needed? Aside from the basic ones, some other counties have created a larger minimum lot size in certain areas because, because of some water quality issues and our concerns and water shortages. It may be appropriate for additional siting standards, like additional setbacks. Right now, an accessory structure is not, in some cases, could get a smaller setback from a property line than the primary structure. We probably at this point are, we would, are considering just writing into the proposal that the ADU would have to meet the same setbacks as the primary structure because it is a dwelling. There may be some other standards that you think are important or needed around rural ADUs. And so those are things to think about. And this is one of those slides that I can come back to if you want, when you're having your conversation. But I do want to move on to the RVs and just get through this. So, so we can have the fun part of the conversation. The second part of this is from Senate Bill ten thirteen of the twenty twenty-three legislature that added this new potential use only for counties. And that is the allowance to use an RV as a second dwelling on a property. Again, this is optional. We don't have to do it. We can choose to. There are some minimum standards in state law that we would have to comply with if we were going to allow this. And there is an option to allow additional standards as well. This one is kind of interesting because the state law says that this, you can allow RVs, the second dwellings in rural residential zones. But then it goes further to define rural to include rural residential zones plus residential zone areas inside of the urban growth boundary of the Metropolitan Service District, the Portland Metro Urban Growth Boundary, but not inside of a city. And so what that really means is that any residential zone that allows a single family dwelling inside the urban growth boundary, the Portland Metro Urban Growth Boundary, or outside the urban growth boundary could potentially have this use. Again, this does not apply to farmer forest zones, the EFU, Ag Forest or TBR. It applies to urban, low density residential zones and rural residential zones. Again, this legislation excludes urban reserves. So inside urban growth boundary, outside urban growth boundary, but outside urban reserve. Once again, I made a happy little map. That's probably very hard to see. So in this case, the yellow areas are the same as the previous map that you saw. But the addition here are these orange areas that are inside the Portland Metropolitan Urban Growth Boundary. These are all the areas where this use could be allowed. There are minimum standards. Again, you're only allowed one RV on a site. It has to be subject to a rental agreement. There's very few specifics about that rental agreement. The primary dwelling again can be the only other dwelling on the property. So, and no part of that dwelling can be rented. The primary dwelling has to be the primary residence of at least one of the property owners. So in other words, you can't have on your RRFF five piece of property, your primary dwelling plus your ADU plus an RV that someone's using as a dwelling. Uh-uh. You get two of those things if, if we allow all these. The property owner must provide what they, the statute calls essential services to the RV space, including water, sewage disposal, electrical supply, and if required by state law, a drainage system. The specific reference is to ORS ninety one hundred. It's listed up there. There are also certain habitability regulations that are referenced in there, but the property owner must provide those essential services. Again, the RV cannot be used as a short term rental. The RV is not subject to building codes. It is a recreational vehicle. Considerations with this use. Again, are certain locations more or less appropriate for this? Like certain zones, geographic areas? Is it more appropriate in the urban area? Is it more appropriate in the rural area? You have, you know, sanitary sewer, public sewer and water in the urban area, but you have smaller lots. You have more room in the rural area, but you have septic systems and wells in most cases. Is this not appropriate in Clackamas County at all? And if allowed, are there additional restrictions and standards? And I put some examples up here. These are things that as we are drafting the code, we've been thinking about, is there maybe a minimum lot size? I mean, in the, in the rural area, I guess, that might be appropriate. Given that you would have potentially two dwellings on a septic system and potentially sharing a well, are there additional siting standards, setbacks, separation from other structures and something that other counties have done? Big concern was fire and that they wanted to make sure that the RV is not right up against a dwelling. How, how are we going to address resource and hazard area standards? The, an RV is not considered a structure under our code. And so unless we make it, make certain standards applicable in those areas that would be applicable to other standards, then, then arguably they wouldn't be applicable. And so staff thinks that's probably an appropriate thing to do. And there are some, you know, other standards to think about. One jurisdiction I talked to potentially, you know, would require that the RV must have an operable toilet and sink. And that to like, to me seems something intuitive, but I, it needs, they found that it needs to be written into the code because this is a dwelling. It's intended to be a dwelling or for somebody to dwell in. And, and so there needs to be some minimal things like that. And so those are some, some considerations that we have been thinking about. Curious if you have any opinions about those. And then finally, I'm almost done. ZDO two eighty-five does include some other items. These are not optional items. We'll talk more about them as the hearings come, but just so you know that to expect to see other items in the package of code amendments. There's a bunch of amendments related to affordable housing, some mandatory changes under the two house bills listed, listed here that require jurisdictions allow affordable housing on certain properties in certain commercial locations, certain ownership type properties. It makes some changes to the affordable housing density bonus and talks about single room occupancy and prefabricated structures. And we need to weave those into our, our zoning code. There was some legislation also that changed the standards for replacing dwellings and resource zones in the EFU, Ag Forest and Timber Zones. Those also are mandatory. We need to weave those into our zoning code. And then of course, as we go through all of this, we find other sort of cleanup and clarification items that need to be done. Those housekeeping items that always end up getting included in these packages. So moving forward, we are planning to have some sort of virtual open house or Q and A session next month, hopefully, to talk about rural ADUs, RVs and second dwellings, give the public chance to weigh in. CPOs will all be invited. We'll advertise that and hold that sometime next month. We have a public hearing schedule. I wrote tentative on here without Jennifer's permission. This assumes that Martha can get everything done, but to me now in time, it's time for notice and for these meetings. But we really would like to stick with this schedule. We have the April twenty-second Planning Commission meeting set aside for, for a hearing on ZDO two eighty-five. It may be that we need another hearing and because May eighth was the only date we could get with the board in May, we would potentially have a special meeting the following week on April twenty-ninth with you all, if we need to continue your hearing. We will be setting up a project webpage very soon, hopefully in the next, within the next week or so. That's going to provide some information and enable people to provide us with their feedback on these two issues, on the rural ADUs and the RVs and second dwellings. So that's it for me. Do you want me to go back to any slides or do you want me to stop sharing and see everybody in the room?
Thank you, Martha. I have hands up. Tammy?
Yes, I, I have a couple items. Martha, I, and I know that your scope is the ordinances and how maybe this might look. But can we sort of start at a little higher level of, has there been any sort of super high level guesstimation of the impact of the increase in residences as a result of one, the, and then the other?
And as a matter of fact, I was just talking to Karen Buring about that today, having somebody do a little bit more GIS work. I created those maps. I am not a GIS professional. I just wanted to show where they were. And so I don't know how many lots are affected and we would like to have those numbers certainly before the hearing. I think there's a couple of important things to keep in mind, particularly with the ADUs. You know, we've allowed ADUs in the urban area for, for decades and haven't seen the development of a whole lot. To develop an ADU is not inexpensive. It has to be a property owner that has the, the willingness and the financial capability. Um, it has to be a property owner that has the the willingness and the financial capability. Because um particularly in the rural area, um, it may require upgrades to your septic system. You know, a lot of septic systems cannot handle a whole nother dwelling on them. Um, there are construction costs. There are, you know, fees associated with all of that. And so it's not, um. There's, there's some rules um under state law that talk about, you know, and in. When you are looking at your housing needs analysis and you can't assume more than a three percent increase related to A D Us, right? Unless unless you have other data that shows that it would be higher than that or lower. Um, and so I think that's where we would start is this assumption that maybe we'd see up to three percent. And I, again, I don't know, but we need to work a little bit more on that. The R V's piece is a little bit different. I think that sort of the cost to get in the door would be a little bit less, although there would be costs associated with it. I mean, you have, you're basically creating your your own little like single stall R V park. Um, you know, there has to be an installation of of utilities. And again, the septic system may have to be upgraded um to handle the R V as well. Um, but I think maybe the costs are a little bit lower because you're not building a structure necessarily. Um, so I don't know yet how to estimate that one, but it's certainly something worth thinking about.
It just would be, I think, super important to have some sort of semi-educated guess. So shifting again to the next part is, I mean. If the state wants the county to take on the responsibilities. That have really been the solely the cities, which is planning, funding and implementing services to accommodate this kind of population growth. I mean, that's great. I mean, if the county can do it and they have all the money in the world and all the staff in the world to do it, great. But they don't have it. I mean, they don't have any of that in place. And that is what has me very seriously worried, that we do not, especially seeing all that. Yellow directly south of Oregon City. We don't have the services. We don't have the schools. We certainly don't have the transportation. Our roads are very seriously failing. Um, and so in order to consider this, my opinion strongly is. Um, that let's start with getting those services in place. Let's get the planning done, the funding done. Let's get the roads upgraded. Let's get our intersections on two thirteen fixed. Let's get um the schools built. And then let's shift to considering this. Because this puts a serious health and safety issue on rural areas that are are already suffering. With no plan to correct this. So um it unfortunately, I think the state has gotten the cart before the horse on this situation. And, you know, don't get me wrong, it's already happening. There's so few roads in Beaver Creek that you can't drive down. That you don't see the R V, the motor home, and the white hose is hooked up to the faucet and the and the septic uh line is hooked up. To the intake of the septic. They're everywhere. As a matter of fact, there's one on Bradley Road that has three R Vs, one, two, three, right next to each other. And I've never seen at the Hamlet level an application for that stuff. So, um, and and then finish reading everything. It's really the monitoring, the regulating. There are so many things here, like rental agreements. How are you gonna run that? Short-term rentals? I don't even know if that ever came into play on short-term rentals. But the reason that that you all struggled with that was because of all the administrative side of it. So just being able to regulate all of this. I mean, we can't count on code enforcement and complaint-driven problem solving. So. Again, it's money, it's staff. How would that ever happen? So I think you can hear I am avidly against this primarily because it's not fair. And it's um not being planned appropriately. And um, but I'll shut up because other people want to speak. So thank you, Martha. As always, great job, but. Um, not not a good plan.
Thank you, Tammy. Tom Peterson?
Well, I'm kind of gonna echo kind of what Tammy was saying is, I mean, I get the get it. But the enforcement, the permitting, um, it. Like you say, one of my thoughts was, I gotta think this is already going on, particularly with the R Vs already. And once you open the floodgate, uh, you've got uh lots and lots of enforcement issues. That I I think will be problematic as as Tammy alluded to. I also found it interesting that it was oak, that they wasn't uh, R Vs couldn't be permitted in a city. But an urban city, unincorporated, they could be. It's like, well, what's the logic there? I don't get it. Why is a city exempt in an urban area that just doesn't have to be incorporated? I guess they want us to all become cities. Uh, uh, so that that was kind of an odd. Thought. And then the other one was urban reserve. It's like, well, that doesn't even make any sense. You're you're allowing those other areas, but the urban reserve is like, what's so special about the urban reserve? So the so by immediate reaction is this obviously wasn't thought through very well. And uh it I can see it being really uh problematic if there's not a lot of thought into how it's going to be. Administered uh and so forth. To Tammy's comment about the facilities not being present, that's never stopped any development in the urban areas. They go and develop the hell out of the area. The roads can't handle it. The schools aren't appropriate. That's normal. So why would why would they treat these other things any differently? They never have the, they never have the uh, they always have the cart before the horse here. So that doesn't surprise me that they haven't thought that through. So I'm not not a big fan. But on the other hand, it's like, okay, we got a housing problem. We got to give it some consideration. We ought to think about. Well, are there some ways it could be done where it might be palatable for the various communities that'll be affected by it? So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Tom. Louise?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I actually just had a question. Um, do we have a definition of what is an R V? To to me, it could be anything from a pickup truck with a camper sitting on its bed. All the way up to your million-dollar bus, you know, that those really expensive-looking things. Is do we have a definition of R V? Because it seems like we have to define it if we're even going to consider it. I'm not saying we're going to consider it, but seems like we talk about cart before the horse. We need a definition.
Can I jump in on that? I'm glad you mentioned that because I was thinking the same thing. What about trailers? By definition, they're not an R V, but they're a living unit. And I know of people in the city that use trailers and they have them uh on Airbnb. And they rent their trailers out. It's going on in the city right now. Uh, so it's like, well, is that included? Because that's essentially the same thing, so.
Does does the vehicle need to be motorized on its own or right? Like, is it a tow behind? So really need a definition to even think about this going forward, I think.
And and that's fair. Um, our zoning code does have addition definition of recreational vehicle, and so does the state law. And our definition um includes a vehicle licensed by the State of Oregon with or without motive power. That is designed for human occupancy and to be used temporarily for recreational seasonal or emergency purposes. And this comes right out of state law, I think, Jennifer. Has a gross floor area not exceeding four hundred square feet in the setup mode. They shall include but are not limited to parked trailers, travel trailers, pickup campers, motorhomes, five-wheel trailers. Camping and tent trailers. That is our current definition. State law um has some language in there, specifically related to this. That the R V has to be titled um by the Department of Transportation. And it shall not have been rendered structurally immobile. So those standards would be written in there as well. Um. I don't know if we want to talk about whether or not certain R Vs are better or worse. Um, I mean, those are those are the definitions that we have, and that's what state law.
Well, it sounds like a pretty broad definition because it went the full spectrum except for the one that's structurally immobile. Which means it's falling to pieces. So, um, yeah, I don't know. I I'm more with, you know, what Tammy said. That, you know, I'm not really thinking we should go forward with this, but right, if we do, we need to really look at those definitions. Because they can also devalue areas because if you have too many, you know, uh, a hodgepodge of. Not so good R Vs, it it devalues. Like she was saying, this one property has three of them. And I don't know what they look like, but you know, again, it gets starts getting dicey. That's all I wanted to throw out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Michael?
Uh, yeah, uh, this the R V issue is really, um. I drive down to Rose all day and I see uh R Vs parked along the side of the road and they're just this despicable. And junk, and that's going to happen with the, whether we do this or not. There's going to be all over the place anyway. Uh, you answered a bunch of my questions about urban reserve. Uh, how many uh possibly we're going to look at and the mobile home issue? Uh, whether or not it's considered an R V. But I had a question about what's the definition of a nuisance property?
Um, well, I can tell you what the state law says. Um, and it it is something that is going to require a little more investigation on our part. But it says, um, bear with me just a second. Where is it? The dwelling shall not be subject to an order declaring it a nuisance or subject to any pending action. And then it references the statute. Um, and it's not your typical code enforcement, like somebody, you know, built something without permits. Or somebody um has three R Vs on their property and they're not supposed to have any right now. It's not those kinds of code enforcement actions. It it has more to do with hazardous buildings. There's um a lot of references in the statutes to drugs, um, drug paraphernalia and and things like that. And so, again, it's something that we need to spend a little more time looking at. And quite frankly, we don't, if it's not something that code enforcement isn't enforcing on, we don't know that there's any a resource to find these properties.
Well, once again, I don't see code enforcement going on anywhere. It's uh, it it's it's chaos out there and it's just, it's just mind-boggling. I moved up here in ninety-six and this is not the way I found this place. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I I have a point or two I'd like to bring up and. Something that Michael had said, R Vs are everywhere. They're all over the place. Up here, I'm in a recreational place. Of course they are. Do I see hoses? Yes, all the time. Short-term rentals have basically taken over the my neighborhood. Um, so uh if you work up here, you need to be creative on where you're going to live. I think this is moving in the right way. I don't think this is quite the right idea. Um, as far as A D Us, yes, I I can agree because they're a permanent structure on the property. There's something an assessor can walk up to and say, yes, I can tax this. And it's going to go up. It's going to appreciate. Um, I don't see that with an R V. R Vs or vehicles themselves depreciate. So is there going to be an expiration date put on these vehicles? So, you know, after ten years, twenty years, are they going to be deemed not livable and then removed? That was a one question I had. Another question would be, what if the person that lives there decides to use it? Does it loses its status if it hits the road, drives away? Number three, will it require homeowner's insurance or just R V insurance? How will you ensure this unit? Um, how many vehicles are allowed to park in front of this vehicle? Is it going to require its own off-street parking? That's another question. And how for how many? Is that based on the bedrooms? Expiration day vehicle assessment, yeah, the assessed value. Okay. Is this going to be long-term rental only? And if so, how do we monitor this? We don't have, we barely have enough people to get what's in front of us done in the county. I do have an idea and I threw it at two commissioners. And and that was our pla- our parks department is really hurting right now. Seeing that they are charging eight dollars a day to park in the parks to cover administration fees. We passed a short-term rental, I shouldn't say us, but we passed a short-term rental bill. That had an administration fee at what, point zero eight-five percent? What if that went up to like ten percent and they took on this registration of these vehicles and they did the monitoring? And they did the monitoring of the short-term rentals. And would this help the parks? I'm just trying to brainstorm a little here. But anyway, uh, those are some questions I have. And with respect to our channel migration zones, our flood zones. A D U should not be close to these nor vehicles. Um, especially if they're sensitive ground. Uh, I don't want. And you you talked about a defensible space around. There's a huge effort in our area. Uh, to create these defensible areas right now, and it should be a requirement. That A D Us and the R Vs themselves have defensible areas. And that's my ten cents word. And Martha, thank you. Awesome job.
Thank you. Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna butt in right now. I don't see any other hands. Um, I think that I've heard a lot of concern about the R V portion of this. Um, and honestly, that doesn't surprise me. I haven't really heard a lot about the A D U side except from Murph. Um, and Tammy, yes, I am going to work on some numbers for that. Um, I think that. On the ground, we would certainly see a lot fewer um A D Us simply because of the cost. And you're right, they would be permanent structures. Um, and I was just wondering if anyone had any other thoughts about that. I think that um, these are definitely things to think about, and Jennifer and I will think about them as we are continuing to draft these regulations. Both of these items, what I neglected to mention about the R Vs is that both of these items um were discussed with the board. And they did ask us to sort of move forward through this process, understanding things might change. Um, they might change their mind. They might um put additional regulations on it. Um, but they were very interested to hear what the public and um the Planning Commission had to say about them. So that was a lot. Originally, the question was, are there any other comments about the rural A D Us? I'm sorry, I just Mike started spinning in circles.
I did have one other point, and that's for A D Us and R Vs. Will they be given an address? And would that address be just a unit number for that property? How will you identify that there is an an A D U or an R V at that property?
An A D U would have an address, yes. I don't think, and we don't use unit numbers unless unless we don't have. Like if there's a shortage of numbers, but in the rural area, that's almost never an issue, you know, that you you run out of sequential numbers. So typically, they're going to have their own separate address. Um, I don't think our, I don't know if our addressing code really speaks to this R V question. But generally, I think, yes, we would give it its own address if they want to get mail and, you know, so it can be identified by the fire department or whatnot. But that would be our normal protocol.
Thank you. Tom?
One question I have, I just want to be clear. A D Us would be subject to every building permit and inspection that a normal construction would be. As we're so a plumber is going to go out, check the plumbing and all that. So so we we can. We can say with some degree of certainty that those units are going to be built in a proper and. But we have no, there is no mechanism that I understand at this point to even inspect whether an R V was placed there. Much less whether it was placed there, subject to conditions we might apply, right? There's no, we have no, the county has no tool for that. Is that right?
So as part of these code amendments, we would also create the process. Um, whether it's through a land use application, what sorts of permitting um are required. And so there, there would be some permitting required. But that's, you know, it's like placing, even placing a manufactured home on a property, there's a placement permit. there would be some permitting required, but that's, you know, it's like placing, even placing a manufactured home on a property, there's a placement permit. But you're not subject to the stating building codes and inspections as a stick built or, you know, or as the ADU would be. And so, yes, there's some limited ability. Um, we certainly would know what's going on the property and we'd have the ability to make sure it's meeting the standards, like any setbacks, um, things like that, making sure that you.
But in your mind, who would be the one, wh- wh- what what current county staff member would be the one that went out to inspect that RV if it was placed?
I mean, I think the. Building permits, right? I mean, it's a, it's our building inspectors, but I don't know that they would be going, they wouldn't be inspecting inside the RV.
Right, but I mean, the hookups and all the other things that we might apply potentially, or even the state minimum standards for that matter. How would we know? I I understand how we would know on a, on an ADU, but I don't see, I guess, I can understand how we can create a mechanism, but I'm I'm just wondering from a staff perspective, is it reasonable to suggest that we could, in a meaningful way, go out and inspect the installation of each RV under these circumstances? Is that, is that a reasonable thing to request of our county staff at this point?
I think that's unlikely. I mean, we, there's, yes, the, um, there would be inspections of the utilities. So, you know, again, there's going to be people like Tammy said, who are just locating RVs. They are now, they'll continue to do that. They're not going to come file for a permit with the county. Um, and that becomes a code enforcement issue. But if you're somebody who's going to come in in the first place and say, I want to do this the right way. I want to do this RV and here's my application or whatnot. Then they would have to do the utility connections because of this requirement to have essential services. So it is, you know, there's going to be like, like Martha said, their own little mini RV park space. So from that standpoint, somebody's going to be going out for for the septic connection. There's going to be a plumbing permit. There's going to be an electrical permit. And so there will be county staff from our building codes and septic program on the site, looking at those things. I wouldn't envision there would be anybody actually looking at the RV. It's very explicitly not subject to building codes. So they're just going to park it and then it's just really the utilities. Now, we could create a process, which Martha and I sort of talked about today. I mean, i- in theory, we could create a process where there's some some inspection. But the thing is, there's no staff to do that.
That's what I, that's what I, there you go.
Right. So what are you going to charge, right? Then you've got to charge enough money for these permits that then you can fund the staff and who's going to, you know, it it's kind of like the short-term rental thing, like who's going to do all of that?
But it would have to be created. It does not exist today.
Correct. Not for the RVs. That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Louise?
Yeah, um, on the, um, RVs, it said that the, um, they would enter into a written rental agreement with a tenant. But on the ADUs, it just said the ADU could not be used as a short-term rental. It doesn't say there has to be a rental agreement. Um, is it just a free-for-all? In other words, it could be a family member who doesn't pay a thing. You know, there's no rules on that with the ADU at all.
That's right. The only rule is that it cannot be a short-term rental.
So it could just be somebody living there for free, or maybe you are renting it long-term? Or I don't know what, but right, it would just be that. But the RV ha- would have to be a rental.
Yes.
Okay, great. I just wanted, that's kind of weird, but you know, to me, it's like, well, one, not the other. That's fine. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Louise. Tom again?
I'm sorry, one more question. I just was, it just occurred to me. I was reading the staff report about like the idea of you have an elderly mother and you couldn't afford to put her someplace else. This would be an ideal circumstance, that kind of thing. That, and this may be a county council question, but could we put a financial limitation on this? In other words, couldn't we say that a property assessed of a million dollars or more could not qualify? I mean, and again, that might be a county council question as opposed to a staff question, but.
Yeah, I don't know. I know legally if we could do that.
Can I jump in on the first part of that, Tom? Are you aware that we do have a a permit that you can get and it's called a temporary home for care?
Right.
So we, okay, you know about those?
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you were asking a question about that.
Well, this guy pointed out that that's a really uh, useful scenario to consider here. That, you know, an elderly or or even an infirm family member, those kind of things. It's kind of the perfect circumstance that this might well apply. And certainly in a financial circumstance, the people that most need that help from us are the ones least financially able to do so. The ones probably least financially able to build an ADU, but perhaps more financially able to do an RV. And that's why I was trying to question, could we say, like, and and frankly, this applies to my street exactly, like I have a very, uh, there's a very mixed use, where there's very high-end extreme homes. And there's also very small ones that that were there before. And like right next to me, there's one with a RV that someone's living in that's not hooked up to anything. And, you know, tried to be nice about it, but, uh, but the next house over is one of the richest people probably in Clackamas County. And and so to treat those two lots the same, it occurred to me, seems disingenuous about the purpose of this whole discussion, which was to try to add residential housing units for those people who need them. And, uh, there's a lot of people where this applies in my neighborhood that don't need it, you know what I mean? That financially might have the ability, but could afford, you know, they could buy their own senior living homes if they wanted, I think. And that's why I was wondering about the, whether there could be a a financial component to the.
Yeah, let me try to, let me try to respond a little bit to what you're saying. I don't know the answer to whether legally the county could do that potentially. It's not something that we've done, you know, historically. It would be a departure. I can imagine it stirring up some strong.
Oh, yeah.
Potentially, right, on both sides. Doesn't mean it's a bad thing to do, but you know, you can imagine it could be a lightning rod. I will say, I guess, a couple of things. Um, on the RVs, there is this provision that says the county, I hate to even say this out loud. There's a provision in the bill that says that we could in fact limit the amount they can charge for rent for the RV. And really, Martha and I pretty much dismissed that that out of hand because there's just no way we have the capacity to regulate that or any infrastructure at the county level to even begin to try to figure out how you would regulate that. Um, but it does say you can do that, which is a little bit of a different take on what you're saying, but maybe kind of sort of gets at the same issue, which is that it's more of an affordable housing option as opposed to just a housing option. Um, the second thing I'll say, and I is that I think, you know, and Martha's much knows so much more about this than I do, but there is this idea right now that we're so short of housing period, it doesn't matter what you add, it's all good. Like from the top to the bottom, because the end, there there's just not enough supply. So you create, you know, units for uh, wealthy people. Then they move into those and something else frees up, you know, and it all kind, that sort of naturally occurring affordable housing then happens at kind of the, with the older units, et cetera.
Yeah, more housing is generally good, yeah.
Yeah, there is no bad housing right now, right? And then I was going to talk a little bit about the rental agreement. So I don't really know why that was put in there for the RV bill and not the ADU bill about being subject to a residential. My sense, and Martha, I don't know if you've already researched this enough to know the answer. I thought maybe it was almost a tenant protection thing. That it was more about like, if you make them create an agreement, then the tenant has rights. And maybe it's less likely that there's going to be some sort of almost abusive or slumlord kind of thing going on because there's this agreement. But I don't know if that was really a factor. And I don't know, we don't really have enough of the background to know why that provision went in.
And honestly, Jennifer, being a landlord for many years, rental agreements are for the landlord. Because somebody is living there for a very short period of time, over two weeks. They're now your tenant, whether you have an agreement or not.
Doesn't matter if there's an agreement.
Right, but if you don't have an agreement, good luck. Because now there's no rules that you hold them to. Getting them evicted is a beyond nightmare. So truly, rental agreements are for the benefit of the landlord and.
So maybe that was it. So that the, so that the evic- evictions are possible if things are not going well.
It establishes the rules and the process because without it, it's nearly, well, it can take seriously over a year to get someone out. If they're, if they're literally not even just paying rent, good luck.
The agreement's useful for dispute avoidance. Is that, is that fair to say?
Say that again.
A- and any rental agreement is good for dispute avoidance in the future.
Oh, the agreements are.
Right.
Um, vital.
Those are the rights, yeah.
Right.
And and I think honestly, it's for, it's it's for protection on both sides because because of the language that they put in there about the essential services, which also tie into habitability. There must have been some sort of concern about the habitability of some of the RVs. And so I don't know, I don't, I haven't spent a lot of time looking into the why. It's just in there and it's mandatory. Um, it's not mandatory, that'd be a written agreement, but how else really would you show that you have a rental agreement? Um, we're not going to just take someone's word for it and have some sort of oral, uh, rental agreement. Um, I would say maybe I feel like some earlier conversations about this particular legislation. I mean, I think there is this knowledge that there are a lot of these, um, RVs out there that are not legal. Um, and that are not probably safe and that are hooked up to sort of questionable utilities or not any at all. Um, and I think this was maybe an effort to help remedy that by making them legal and subject to certain standards. I don't know necessarily that that is going to be the outcome of this because somebody who's already doing it would have to come in and get a permit and pay money. So unless they're already in code enforcement, this is a way, this would be, you know, a mechanism for them to legalize what they're doing. Um, but I feel like there was a little bit of that behind this legislation as well. Personally, don't know that this is necessarily the best way to resolve that, but it certainly is something to think about whether or not even it does resolve it in some of these situations, whether it's, you know, it's worthwhile.
Well, I have a question now about the RVs. If the person that is owns the RV is on somebody else's property, does that, uh, property owner have any recourse if that RV is not meeting standards? Uh, you know, I can understand that if the property owner has the RV and rents it out to someone. But what about if the RV is owned by an individual and they're renting the space there? What's, wh- what's the legality there?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. There, I I would hope that there's something written into the rental agreement. But I don't know. I mean, it could, at that point, I suppose, become a code enforcement issue if if the RV is just not habitable. I don't know if Jennifer has any additional insight on that.
I might have a little insight that has, it's kind of collateral, but I had a.
Yeah, may I get a question out real quick? Are we permitting just the the space that this RV is sitting in? Or are we permitting the RV itself? Does the RV get a big sticker stuck on the front of it that we can see through the road? So when it drives away, so does the permit? Or is that spot always going to have that permit?
Well, that's an interesting question. I guess we're permitting the spot to have an RV in it. Um, I think that it's perfectly reasonable to assume that the RV, it may change, what what RV is there might change. So, and so.
Each time you're checking to make sure there's a toilet and a sink?
Uh, if that's one of the things that we add into the.
Okay.
Into the regulations, we don't have to add that. That was just something I threw out there that I found in my research that other, another jurisdiction is doing. So, yes, I mean, presumably, they, they're doing, they're, they are somehow having some sort of permitting, um, and inspection for the RV, the new RV to come in and connect.
Thank you very much. Tom?
Well, the only collateral thing I was going to say is that I I do know that property owners are, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Tom, go ahead. I apologize. I thought you were talking to me. Tom, too, yeah.
I think he's staying on him, but you're on mute. Other Tom, Tom Peterson is on mute.
Oh, well, quickly, I just know that a property owner is responsible for animals that a tenant may have on their property.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that would mean that a property owner is responsible for an RV that they have on their property. But that seems like a logical extension. So there you go. That's my two cents.
Definitely a part of the rental agreement, all of it, animal, all of it.
Right.
TP?
Okay, I realized I was talking, I didn't even have my mic on. So I was telling you, Tom, go for it. It's okay, just so you know. That, uh, these, this is really an interesting dilemma. There's lots, lots of, lots of nuances here. My, my, my main takeaway is here's another attempt to try to solve a problem without thinking about the long-term implications to the agencies that are responsible for administering and and doing these projects. So it's like these initiatives we pass that assume there's people to do the work or assumes the government has the people to do the work. And they fail because the government can't respond, uh, despite how, uh, well-intended the initiative might be. And so this, this strikes me as another example of a lot of assumptions on the part of the legislature that the counties have the ability to take this on without really thinking about that aspect first. And so to me, it's another example of maybe a great idea thrown upon an agency that doesn't have the resources to do it in the right manner and it will fail. And so for that reason, I'm just thinking, you know, we we just got to be careful about how much we're trying to bite off here right now, given the resources that the county has uh, as well. And I just, I just don't think people get that, that there's a shortage. I mean, most everywhere, there's, there's a resource shortage. Trying to find people to fill these, fill these, uh, to do the jobs. And certainly, that's the case that you are faced with right now. And so why we're taking on something more when we don't have the resources, uh, is kind of beyond me. And I, and I think the commissioners need to kind of recognize that there's, there's a great idea, well-intended, yeah, we can probably make it work, but wait till we have the staff before we take it on.
And the resources, Tom.
Yeah.
We don't have the transportation, at least not south of Oregon City. And we don't have the schools and we don't have the parks. Um, I don't know about the sheriff's office, but we don't, we cannot carry this capacity in our current situation. And the county doesn't want to be a city. They're not going to plan it. They're not going to fund it. So who's going to? Not property taxes. I can tell you how much, how many taxes you you get on an RV.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is.
There, there you go. That's a great point.
And so the RV is paying for what? Transportation, schools? No, no, they're not. Now, ADU, slightly different, but this is, um, you know, it's not the way to solve this problem. Maybe we could all be on the task force on how to solve the problem.
May- maybe we can condition it with that there's going to be SDUs associated with with this, you know, system development charges.
Okay, now you're talking. Just literally that this is a burden on our transportation system and everything else. Absolutely.
Yeah.
And this one suggested that would have to be, that'd have to be a part of, it would have to be.
And then you have to make sure it's spent where it's being used and not go to Clackamas Town Center. That'd be great.
Mr. Moss, you have not said anything.
I, I think you guys have said it all and and then some. Um, I, you know, the ADUs, I really don't have a problem with. I appreciate Tom and Tom Two's point on those. Appreciate Tammy's, the point she was making on recovering costs and that. And, yeah, I mean, our transportation system, we have enough problems with that alone that the housing problem, of course, is separate. And then you have the RV problem, which is a a being addressed in the state and other potential problems there as well. So basically, to sum it up, Oregon has a lot of problems, but instead of tackling the problems, we tend to tackle things that aren't really problems. So there are, so I'll just wait until the hearing and see who we have comment on it and then see where we lie.
Good comment, Kevin.
Anyone else? Louise, anything else? Anyone else? Louise, anything else? Michael?
Okay. Thank you. You've given us a lot to think about. Um, so we will march forward. Um, we will be talking about this again. Um, and I just think it is important to keep in mind, even though we're talking about these things together, it, they, they, they are separate. Um, and it may be that, that you are okay with the rural ADUs, but not with the RVs or vice versa. Um, and that's, that's okay. Um, I just want you to remember that these are two sort of separate issues and um, separate code amendments, even though they're all coming in the same package.
And so if we can have like a population estimate on each separately, that would be
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I, I really, I, I'm not lying. I actually had a conversation with Karen Buick earlier to see if I could use her new GIS guy um, to do some analysis for me, cuz I just don't have the time to figure it out.
Martha, one thing I wanted to mention, I don't know that there's any use to this at all. But the one thing that like title insurance companies have that the government doesn't is the very same county records organized in a different way. So it's organized by ownership name, you know, so you can follow, it's not, it's not grant or grantee like the counties are. And I don't know if there's any value in their database. But if the county ever decided that that organized data was useful, I might be able to help access it. It's the only thing I don't just because I, that's the only thing I know at all is, is people in the title business. So maybe. So if there's any use to that, there you go.
I'll have to think about that. I do like data. And tables. I like data in tables. Like everything in tables. Alright, so thank you very much. I, I took lots of notes. Um, and you've given us a lot to think about. I appreciate it.
Again, great job, Martha. Lock it.
Jennifer, awesome job too.
Yeah, wait, I'm gonna start to feel inferior here, not careful.
No, 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 don't.
I'm kidding. Martha's fantastic.
It's why we ca- we call you all the masters, you're the, the people who run the county. And then there's Ellen.
He's helping set up the webpage, so she's here listening.
Awesome. Alrighty, are we going on?
Yep, and planning commissioners, thank you so much for participating in this subject. This is a tough subject. Okay, moving on. Let's see.
Did I miss the minutes? Cuz I, I somehow didn't get them.
I don't think there were any.
Oh, good.
I didn't see the agenda before it went out and I looked at it and I thought, are there minutes? So I, if there are, you don't have them. I'll, I can check with Darcy and see if there really is a set that you're supposed to approve.
Okay.
It's not urgent, whatever it is, I'll tell you that.
I move the approval mythly, have them.
Yeah, there we go. If we had minutes, I'm sure they would be perfect, says Martha.
I just was gonna say, we have to worry about the next meeting.
Was the last media public hearing? I feel like it was one of your items, wasn't it? Was it the, uh, the light industrial zone change?
I feel like it probably was, which means there probably are minutes.
Which means I also owe you a couple of those little report backs of like what the board did and I
Oh, yeah.
I'll put those together for the next meeting. Can you make a note to ask Darcy about the minutes, Martha? Cuz I won't remember.
Yeah.
Yes, we did that land use uh, that zone change down on 135th. That's right.
That was the last thing.
Yes.
Well, I guess the short report back is that the board approved that. And it's been adopted and nobody appealed it. So um, that's the short version.
Exactly.
I still want to, I need to, I need to get back in the habit of, of doing that, the follow-up little write-up for y'all.
And, and I take it, we don't have to go to a board, uh, to Board of County Commissioners meeting to deliver what we talked about. Okay.
Not until you have your hearing um, at the end of April.
Day off. That's good. Okay.
What's going on, Jennifer?
I don't have any staff, that's what's going on. But besides that.
You have, you have Martha and Joy.
Yeah, I do. They're fantastic. They're like having two people each, I think. Yeah. Um, now we have openings again, so we had a couple of people leave, not people that you would have nobody who's come to the planning commission, but we had a couple of people leave back to back right after the holidays. So um, yeah, so we're hiring again. But anyway, we are hiring and it's going reasonably well. So maybe I'll have something to report. All, all I can say so far is we have a new planner one joining us uh, coming to us from the city of Portland, starting on the, starting Monday, actually, um, next Monday. And he seems fantastic. His name's Max. Um, some good experience and I think he'll be a great addition. So he is getting his master's in planning at Portland State right now, but he's also worked for oh, somewhere in Ca- city in California that escapes me, a large city in California, San Jose maybe, um, and uh, city of Portland. So anyway, seems like a, a great addition. And then uh, we did an internal promotion to planner one of one of our permit specialists, Michelle Salo. Um, so I'm very happy about that. So of course, that means we have to backfill for her too, but so those two are starting Monday, but um, we do have three other openings that we've done interviews and are kind of in that sort of dance right now of um, you know, get people on board. So I'm filling a couple of vacancies that have been open for a while, so.
We've had a lot of land use activity um, over the winter. And for who you have, Jennifer, they're doing amazing jobs. I mean, Willman, Elizabeth uh, and there's more, but uh, you know, we communicate back and forth on each of these and they're really responsive and helpful. So
Great.
No, I know you're bare-bonesing, but we're not, we're, we're not feeling it out here.
Good.
Even though I'd love the land use to shut down, I don't think that's gonna happen.
So.
We haven't really, yeah.
So I have a question. Um, you know, the story I keep hearing is everyone just keeps robbing people from each other. Uh, so the real question is, is there a pipeline of new, new talent coming in? Or are you experiencing so, the same phenomena I was experiencing in the engineering field where the schools aren't producing the amount of student, amount of graduates that the industry needs? And I'm curious if that, if that's a problem for planning as well.
Um, I wouldn't necessarily say so. We ju- we hired um, in the fall, a brand-new grad straight out of the U of O and she's fantastic. Um, just really great. And so, and we've interviewed this, this round of planner ones that we interviewed um, another uh, somebody from an out-of-state who's just getting a degree, but has some, some good experience from like internships. Not sure yet whether she's gonna join us or not because she's, you know, looking at different geographic locations and things, but also seems really fantastic. So I don't know if it's so much that. Um, I mean, I feel like for us, it's been obviously a lot of retirements and then um, I mean, I'll just say it, what we do is really hard.
Yeah.
It's really hard. And um, I think sometimes I forget that cuz I've been doing this for so long, but it's high volume. It's um, it's high, like, it's a lot of responsibility to tell people what they can and can't do with their property and be thinking, what if I get it wrong? And you know, and just like all the records we have to research that aren't a very, some of them not very modern and a code that's, you know, this thick and changes all the time. And there's a lot to it. And I think you have to be the right, you know, that's gotta be your jam. But you wanna do that for a living. And for some people, it's a lot and they'd rather do something else besides process permits or work with the public or whatever. And so I think that that's, we've had a little bit of that, like that this just isn't quite right for me. Um, so anyway, we've got, I think, a really good team right now. It's just a little bit small. So we're gonna hopefully fix that. I'm hopeful.
Yeah.
It seemed like I remember, Jennifer, that there was a lot of uh, you got a lot of codes and what have you there, and they're not all that automated. And some things in one area, conflict with something else in another area. Have, ha- has anybody thought about trying to get that together and get some coordination between the various codes and make sure that when you look something up, you get uh, multiple inputs from it?
Did Jennifer pay you to say that?
Funny, you should say that, Michael. Um, yes, so you know, we started um, pains me to say this, but like 12 years ago, um, we started
I remember.
ZDO audit, remember, Tom? The ZDO audit. And um,
Seven year audit?
Yeah, that was supposed to be supposed to be done in five years. And then it was like marijuana became legal and we spent, you know, like a year on that. And then housing became the thing, you know, it's, it's just been derailed by all kinds of things. So we made some progress and then it stalled and it made some things better and frankly, it made some things worse. Because you start cleaning something up and you stop halfway through and it's like, well, wait, you know? So anyway, we applied. Um, when I say we, I really mean Karen Buick and Martha applied for a grant. Um, it was actually one with the state and one with Metro that we were gonna try to pull together to do what we're now calling the ZDO diagnostic report, which is basically like, let's look at our code and have somebody from the outside look at our code and try to give us some ideas of how we should do things differently and um, including making it more functional digitally than what we currently have. Um, and anyway, we were successful in getting the grant from Metro, not from the state. But Metro increased our grant because of that. Um, and so we're actually are gonna be uh, starting a project probably as soon as Martha finishes this housing stuff that she talked to you about tonight. Uh, but we'll have a consultant and um, some outside funding and be able to really fully do a deep dive um, on the parts of our code that really still need a lot of work. And so, yeah, you'll be seeing more. But the first part is just to figure out what we need to do. And we figure that's gonna take probably a year. And then we would actually be then trying to do some of what they recommend.
Right, great.
Yep.
And the, the project is actually called Project Streamline. That was Jennifer's name and I
Yeah, I did.
Streamline our code. But the very first part is this diagnostic report to figure out how the heck to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I, I, you know, I've stuck around cuz I just wanted to be a part of that whole process and
I heard that you might have re-upped, Tom. I heard you might have submitted an application to re-up. Darcy might have said something about that.
I, I did.
So I'm very happy about that.
Well, that's, that's if they still want me, so.
Well, that's not really my decision, but
I'll let them decide if they wanna keep me or not. I figured, alright, I'll, I'll let someone else decide whether I should stay on or not.
I can't remember who else is, well, obviously we have Commissioner Shodel's vacancy to fill. And who else is up?
I think Mike, you're up too, right?
I, I think I'm up too.
Okay. Well, if you're gonna re-up, you better get your application in.
Yeah, I think I did. I think I already applied.
Okay. So, yeah.
Probably not one of my, my better pieces of work, I'll say that.
Doing some uh, doing some interviews and whatnot here whenever we can find the time and get the appointments and re-appointments done. So that's going on. Uh, that's probably all really that I have to share. Your next meeting's canceled, March 11th. Um, and I really, I didn't have Darcy cancel the one on the 25th officially, but I'm, that's, I'm on vacation that week and we're not really gonna have anything for you until these hearings start. So uh, Martha, is there any reason why we would need to be back for anything before? Um, before you're here?
I mean, I don't think so unless there's something else that we wanna do, like in a study session related to this package. Um, we will have the draft code amendments out by then and may have had the open house, but or whatever it's called, the Q and A, whatever this virtual thing is.
Okay.
But I wouldn't, I don't know.
Well, how about if I say this, March 11th is officially canceled. March 25th, we'll call it tentative. It'll probably be canceled, but let's just hold it for another couple of weeks, just in case we decide that Martha needs to come and talk to you about something. Uh, and then we will be busy in April. We have both, both meetings, but these hearings that promised to be pretty interesting, I think, so.
I, I would like to comment that I took part in a training, training program put on by the Oregon American Planning Association. It was just for a couple hours on a Friday night. Uh, the next day, the planners went to, and I found that very educational for this short time that I was there. It was an excellence, excellent talk and it was by one of our uh, one of the, one of the speakers was one of our lawyers and Caleb did an excellent job. And is there any way to have a study session that perhaps he can visit or is it too expensive? Show up and maybe go over our process again for uh, we commissioner, planning commissioners?
Yeah, we can look to do that at some point. We had Nate Boderman do that a few years ago, but it's been a while. Like it was before COVID, I think, when Nate came. So yeah, our new um, Nate Boderman had been our land use attorney. He took a state, a job with the state of Oregon and left. And um, we now have Caleb Hugel and he had interned with Nate and he uh, clerked for uh, Luba a land use board of appeals when he first got out of law school. He's fantastic. Um, just really, really smart and knows so much um, about land use. So yeah, it's, he's great. So we could look to do that. I wanted to mention, I don't know if any of the rest of you did, but uh, the planning commission training opportunity, it was a Zoom on Thursday. Murph, were you on that?
I was in person.
Oh, okay. Uh, and so a DLCD did the first part and that was really all about the history and then ongoing um, state of Oregon land use. That's really what it was all about, all the rules, all the, and then Caleb was on. And he gave us in great detail our job as planning commissioners. So it was like, oh, okay, now I've got it. But that was not all, yeah, it was, it was you know, there was a lot of history and then a lot of value. I really enjoyed it and I would love to see at least an annual planning commission opportunity like that, just to kind of you know, more deeply understand our roles and what we should and shouldn't do. And I mean, we talked about things just about um, not on legislative, but quasi-judicial, ex parte, and what does that mean? And really? And then, so Caleb did a great job and it was nice to meet him there. So thank you for giving, giving us that opportunity. Yeah, I'm glad. It sounds like, I think you and Murph were at the same thing, just one was in person and one was on Zoom. Um, yeah, that was, that was good. And um, so yeah, I can certainly look to have Caleb do something. Um, you know, maybe next fall, we could look to, to do something like that.
And something I, that really stuck with me coming out of that ex parte was that we are appointed and we cannot interact with people or interact about the subject, so to speak, that's coming up in that hearing. But our commissioners, our Board of County Commissioners are elected officials that have to work with lobbyists, so they can talk about everything. And, oh, well, that's not fair. So these guys can get out.
Well, that's not exactly right, Murph. I mean, there, if, if it's a quasi-judicial, if an applicant is coming to them and they know and they're gonna sit, they're not, yeah, they're not supposed to have interactions the public realm either.
Yeah, I didn't have that impression. That was from Gordon.
They have to declare it. I mean, again, it's not that you can't, you have to declare it and then somebody can challenge you. I mean, it's, but it's also there's a reason not to have those conversations behind the scenes, right? And to, to, to have it play out in public. And so that is supposed to work the same way with the board. And this is if an item is coming to them. Of course, most things, you know, go to the hearings officer. So it's, that's why you guys hear more code amendment type stuff and not too many individual applications. But, but when you do, then yeah, those ex parte rules apply to the board the same as they do to you. Yep. Well, I just would define Caleb as quite an encyclopedia. He is. He, he knows his stuff. It was like, ooh, here we go. So yay. It's amazing. You can mention something land use and he'll be like, oh yeah, it's this case, so-and-so versus so-and-so. And you're like Yes, he did a lot of that. Quoting different, well, down in Lane County. I'm like, oh my God, where the hell's Lane County? I, I think he reads Luba decisions for fun on the weekends or something. It's amazing. Yeah.
He just has a great memory.
Yeah, I think he does.
Uh, Jennifer, I have one other question. You talked, you talked about your staff. Uh, seems like we constantly have a problem with code enforcement. Uh, who's in charge of code enforcement? Is, is that under your department? And what's the staffing on that? Uh, we seem like um, we need some help there.
Um, I think the issue there is just, it's not that they have vacancies or even that they've had particularly high turnover. They just don't have a lot of staff in the first place. I mean, there's just not a lot of budgeted positions in that department. So they're not under me. We're in the same department, so they're part of the Department of Transportation Development, the same way.
So they're not under me. We're in the same department. So they're part of the Department of Transportation Development, the same way planning and zoning is. Um, they have a supervisor. Um, it has been Michelle Amundt, but she was recently, um, she's now one of the deputy building department or building program, whatever, building codes officials. And so they're gonna be hiring a new supervisor. That position was open and they've been recruiting. And I think interviews are sometime in March. Um, but they only have five code enforcement. Um, I forget what their title is now. Uh, yeah, I always say that, but I don't know if that's right. But yeah, code enforcement officers for the entire county. So
Wow.
It's just not a lot of, you know, and they've all been there for, well, Jen is the newest, but she was an internal promotion. So they, they've actually stuck around um for the most part, but which I can't, it's such hard work. I I think it's amazing that they, that they can do that every day.
There were so many different challenges, like they had one vehicle, one for all these officers, which I think at the time were four. And so now they're sort of beefing it up, but a, a code complaint can literally go on over a year because there's notification and there's re-notification and there's, it just is such a long process that each one is like a case file. And it, it just evolves. And so, I mean, we've worked with code enforcement a lot in the Beeve Creek area. Um, not that we don't still have all the RVs, but it's, it's a tough job. You, nothing happens quickly. And when we did have like a down and dirty, this is a health problem. I still had to go to the Board of County Commissioners. I had to go and testify and say, I'm sorry, but we need help. That's the only time that we were able to get something addressed like right now and truly get it fixed. It's, it's just a hot, a really tough part, cause they're not policemen. And that's, yeah, it's
Well, this goes back to something that Tom uh Peterson said, you know, we, we make these rules and regulations and we can't enforce them. And so why are we doing it? If we can't make people abide by the rules and the codes, it's, it's, it's crazy.
You're not gonna get an argument from me about that.
We're just venting.
Yeah, that's okay. This is a safe space, right?
Yep.
Alrighty, are we done? I have to call someone in Thailand. Oh, I'm feeling, I know. And he's a land use applicant. Renewing his level three home occupation.
Oh, my goodness.
Wants to chat about it.
Wow.
Please, he goes, it's 10:30 in the morning, call me. I'm like I know. It's crazy stuff.
Well, thanks, everybody. I appreciate the, the time and attention to these, these um weighty issues that we have coming before you in April.
Well, yeah.
Oh, we don't have to adjourn. Can we adjourn?
We adjourn.
Can adjourn, sure.
All right. Good night.
Good night.